Thank you. Before we get going any further, I'd like everyone to stand and face the flag at the back of the room, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Yes, I do that. It's my preference to do. Exactly. All right, everybody. Tonight's planning board meeting, Wednesday, August 14th. Like I said, we have a very busy agenda. Our initial agenda has five cases listed. We thankfully have, well, I suppose not thankfully, but for us in a sense thankfully, have two that have either requested to withdraw or continue to next month, so I'm going to take this in order. Case number 24-008 LLA Witham, three house away.
Do you want to introduce the members on the board?
Oh, yeah, I shall. Thank you. Just a reminder, we need to introduce the members. Start on my right.
Robert Davies, Alton.
Chris Evans.
John Warren.
Trace Bascom.
Drew Stevens.
Doug Cummings.
Blair Haney, SRPC.
And because our chair is actually absent tonight, I will sit buzz, and you shall be seated and voting, please. Sure if you would like. So, the first case, again, 24-008 LLA Witham, is a case where the applicant has requested to withdraw without prejudice. I take a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to withdraw, ah, case 24-008 LLA Witham, three house away, that this case has been withdrawn by the applicants.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to withdraw the case per the applicant's request for 24-008 LLA Witham without prejudice, so that they can bring the case forward again if they would choose. Any discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Seven zero zero.
I make a motion to move case 24-009 Nottingham Business Park at 145 Old Turnpike Road to the meeting on Wednesday, September 25th.
At 7:00 p.m.
At 7:00 p.m.
Sure. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move case 24-009 Nottingham Business Park per the applicant's request to 9/25, September 25th. Any discussion?
I do have one thing I'd like to ask. So when this first came before us, it was, we couldn't act on it because of technicality and timing. That was done before new use keys came into effect, and we continued the case then, if we continued the case during the last meeting, and we're continuing it now, is that fair to other applicants who have come after that time? If the applicant for this isn't ready to present to us, is it fair to other applicants who have come after we changed the land use board fees to have to pay more?
Your grant, your grant, if your application came before the fees changed, we honor the fees that you were signed up for.
Even though we haven't taken jurisdictional?
Because the application came in.
If it was, if the application came in and was accepted by the board, then that is the case, but if we never accepted the case, then I don't see how that applies.
We don't have jurisdictional fee.
Beg your pardon?
It's an application fee. It's the date of the approval of the application.
Right.
That's what it goes by. I mean, we could change it to something else. I mean, that's typically what we're doing.
I think it's like the same as if you went from zoning board, your case got pushed away, and the fee that you paid to all your butters doesn't change if the fee goes up, or the fees don't change.
If you didn't continue it, yes, there would have been.
So, so, and if we need to, like, hire an engineer to, you know, review data that's still out there on the table, it's a normal process that's been there already, right?
The difference is that SRPC's fee is now, or expense is now passed, passed through to the applicant. So the engineer has always been the third-party engineer. It's, and then whatever fee increases might have happened, but, yeah, that's, this is largely the, the change.
Yeah.
I think the, the acceptance of the application is mostly for triggering, triggering the start, time for taking action.
Correct.
Otherwise, my guess is that, yeah, if it's been submitted and you've paid your fees, then you're fallen to the original fee structure.
And Drew, I'd probably mention, I think, that they're just trying to button up the building, and they're not actually coming in for use and the whole.
And to be clear, I'm not suggesting that they need to pay all new fees all over again. I just want clarity on how that was supposed to work, because it seems like an odd kind of edge case, so I think we've got clarity on that, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor of moving?
Aye.
Case 24-009 to 9/25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've got seven zero zero. I'm, just so you all know, I'm at the table with my brothers, it seems, anyway. That's how you guys do it, every time. All right, the next case up is 24-010 SIT Ear Real Estate, 155 Old Turnpike Road. The application is from Scott Frankowitz, am I saying it that right?
Sure.
On behalf, okay. Is it Erie, or Ear? How do you say it?
Ear Real Estate.
Ear Real Estate Holdings LLC to request various improvements and additions to his property. These improvements slash additions include a 20 by 160 canopy and a 40 by 80 addition for storage, and the reconstruction of a 24 by 30, but structure to include offices and storage. This property is located at 155 Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map number 003, lot number 009.
I do have 11 by 17s that may be easier to follow along with, because there's a few different things going on. I think I brought them in. We need more. More for you.
Is that different from this?
One who makes it easy.
We don't even get one of those, Scott, you know.
Looks like it's the same.
Scott Frankowitz from New Hampshire Land Consultants. With me is Austin Roberts, owner of the property. This has been in front of the board a couple times. First time we came in front of the board was a change of use when Austin purchased it from Nottingham Business Park three, four years ago.
Three, yeah.
And then recently, he came back and did a lot line adjustment with the bigger property of Nottingham Business Park to make Austin's Robert 200 feet of frontage and a five-acre lot. So what we're, what's currently on the property are three buildings, and on that plan that I handed out, the pink number one is the existing building. It's about 7,700 square feet with equipment storage and office space. There are two loading docks that were used for some business that was there in the past. The square footage is 356 and 665. That building does have a new septic system that we designed for Austin and was put in place. And then the pink number two is a 2,520 square foot storage building that's been there for a long time. And then number three, pink, is a variety of things, and it was an existing building, and I think I got to correct myself on narrative. I thought there was a fire out there. Austin tells me it was just a decay, and he ended up tearing that building down, portions of it that couldn't any longer be used.
Okay.
I'll just say the square footage.
I was just going to say, so when we first came to the board, the town had, that building was condemned, so to speak, or that part of that building, because it had been vacant for so long, and the roof was rotted, so it caved in. So when we got the, here it is. Yeah, when they let us move in and use the building, we had, I had to tear that section down. So it already has existing concrete foundation slab. I just wanted to rebuild it.
So that building includes a 720 square foot concrete pad in the front, which was office and storage, and then the middle building that's kind of, is still there, is 1,462, or 16 square feet. And then on the backside of it, there's a partial frame and flooring still in place of about 1,550 square feet. There's no septic associated with this building right now, and what we showed on the plan, and Blair commented on, it says pro-septic paint, pro-leach field. If he was to get approved to rebuild those, we would design a septic system for that building separately from the one that services the other building. So what we're proposing, and it's the green highlighted, number one is a 20 by 160-foot canopy on the northwest side of the building for outdoor storage, 3,200 square feet. So that would just be a canopy with gravel under it. Austin has a lot of truck beds that he stores on-site, and he wants to get them covered out of the weather, and that's what that would be used, and it would get away from the view of the Nottingham Business Park, too, which is, is one of the desires of the abutter for him to move those. And then number two, highlighted, is in addition to the building, a 40 by 80 addition on the existing building, 3,200 square feet. And then number three is a small concrete pad that he would like to enclose and be part of the existing building. That doesn't change impervious or anything, that just would be to close that in as part of the building. That's an additional 5,735 square feet of building for that, that building. We're not, then on building number four, highlighted in the green, it would be the reconstruction of the existing property or building that was just, that was torn down. There's 3,686 square feet of office and storage, and like I said, that would be a new septic system for that building. The total, total building square feet, including existing and the couple additions, is about 20,000 square feet. And I believe that covers all. We're not proposing any new lighting, any new signage. There was a couple comments Blair had. I mentioned the pro-septic, and then there'll be a discussion on the reconstruction of that building, no doubt. Traffic volumes will not change, it's just for storage. You're not proposing any new signage or lighting or?
I would, I do not have a sign out front. There is a.
That would be a separate permit anyways, right?
I would like to put a sign, but I know that would have to be approved, but not as, right now, no.
And then the last comment was about stormwater, and your regulations trigger at 30,000 square feet of disturbance, and we're, we're well below that for this application.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I can give it just a, a quick overview. You know, as you can see, a lot of it is existing, some of it is enclosing, and some of it is adding to. Each piece kind of has its own considerations, so the board just needs to take that, I guess, one piece at a time. The use is essentially staying the same. It's office, it's storage, it's industrial, so it's, nothing's new in that respect. They're just simply trying to take what they have and make it better or more, so to speak. You know, I list out a few different things to consider. Scott's covered a couple. At the time of review, it was worded as a fire. If it's collapsed and, and taken down, the board's going to have to consider, you know, the existing non-conformance of this and its ability to be built, to be rebuilt in its, in the former foundation, because as you can tell, number four and then the unnumbered pad on the other side of number three, both appear to extend past the setbacks. The unnumbered pad, because of the, there's a jog in the, in the boundary line, it may not, but that'll have to be, the board will have to consider whether or not that, this is, that grandfathering continues.
It's just a steel structure. All you have to do is put the roof back on.
So that's, that'll be something to maybe get clarified and noodle around on.
You talking about the space before, the pink number three, where it says reconstruct 24 by 30 office space?
Yes, that one, that unnumbered pad, and then of course, number four above it, that one's, you know, kind of the nose of it, is extending over the front setback line.
Okay.
So certainly, they can, they can build right up to the setback line and just use the part that's, you know, use the pads that are there and build up to the line, but if they want to use the full thing, then the board will have to consider that. I'm not saying it is one way or the other, I'm just, it is, we got to figure that out.
Is that boundary line there?
Um, I asked about, I asked about, to ensure zoning compliance, again, it does sound like it's just an extension of existing uses, so, and sort of traffic volumes don't seem to be changing. They addressed lighting and storage, or lighting and signage, or touched on it at very least. And then, I guess the, you know, the board can inquire about what we're talking about for total impervious surface. It's a little unclear. It does seem to be fine, just given the sheer size of the property, it's five acres, but, you know, I can't run the calculations of the roadway. I tried to do a back-of-the-envelope of the building sizes, and it seemed like they were fine, but maybe just having some clarity on the plan, if it's approved, maybe that's just a condition, to have just a box that talks about, or speaks to, impervious surface, just to show that it's been, it's been discussed, it's on the plan, it's reflective, it complies with certain. So beyond that, you know, there really isn't anything else, and I ask for any waivers, there's no, I think the board can accept the application is complete, and I believe the board can vote to not consider this a DRI.
Do I have a motion to accept the application as complete?
I would make a motion to accept the application for case 24-010, 010, site review for Ear Real Estate at 155 Old Turnpike Road.
To?
To accept it, sorry, to accept the application.
As complete?
As complete.
Second.
Okay. Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept this case, application as complete. Any further discussion?
See. So.
This is just for the completeness of the application?
It's just not about what's on there, it's just that they have all the information provided, so it's completely personal.
I'm just wondering whether we show, you know, there's an expansion of buildings, whether there's a need to show parking and drainage and water, you know, like Scott mentioned, they're under their 30,000 square foot, but there's still impervious surface and parking areas that we don't really see where those are.
And that's something?
Do we need to add that to this application for us to be able to intelligently look at that, or is this something we ask, accept the application and say, we need these things?
That's how that would work. We can accept the application as complete, the application part of it, part of it, and then for further materials they bring forward to us, we add those conditions to it for that information, and that, and that's why that was brought up.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the application as complete, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh oh. Okay. So you stated as a condition to consider having the, list the amount of impervious, correct?
Yeah, it, it would be good to have it on the plan, on the final proof.
That was one of the things that Ed asked about, wanting to know what was going to be rendered impervious, because lot, max lot coverage for that area is 50%.
Yeah, and I can speak to.
Real quick, though, why don't you take a, can you take a vote on DRI?
Oh, yes.
Please, thank you.
Yes, I will definitely do that, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead and finish what you're saying.
Okay, well, I just got a couple things I can kind of clear up.
No, if you're going to continue on to something else, then I need to, before we forget, vote on the fact that this is not an application of regional impact, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that this case is not developing of regional impact. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that this case is not a application that would have regional impact, direct regional impact. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh oh. Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Okay. So the project kind of is split into two different things. First, the larger building with the highlighted one and two in green, one, two, and three in green, those are all within setback, and there's no issues. Of course, that front building, every single part of that structure has a setback issue, but it's an existing building of record. And Austin was pointing out that where the number four is highlighted, that is a steel structure with a dirt floor. He would like to just put a roof on it, I guess, leave it as open-air kind of storage. And then where the highlighted pink three, and then where I got the note as the pad, that's an actual concrete pad that's out there. I think I submitted pictures, I don't know if they were there or not, with the application to show what's out there. And then for the impervious question, I did research that, because that was a question that Blair had, and currently, with all the additions and everything, at the end of the day, if this was approved, there's 21.3% of the lot will be impervious. That includes the pavement that's already there and the gravel area that's around the buildings and goes out back to the Nottingham Business Park property. And like you said, it's 50% coverage is allowed, so we're well under, under the allowed impervious area for the lot. And then to the parking, there's, we can delineate parking definitely on here, it's easy enough, there's plenty, it's not a retail kind of business, it's, it's just a few workers that come in and leave, that, and then, but if the office, if that changes to office, then well, of course, we'll have to show a few parking spaces for that. There is pavement by that number four, three building, where we could show parking right in front of that, and then the rest of it's gravel around the other two buildings.
They're all pretty flat already, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there would be no, no earth moving or anything for what we're proposing.
All right, anything else?
May I ask a question? Austin, what business are you in?
So I'm a general contractor, and I also sell rust-free truck beds. So I buy them down south and resell them up here where people have rusted beds. So the, the building, if you look, so essentially, where it says number four, when I took over the property, that, the, it just had an open steel structure. It slanted, it slants off of building number three. That was completely rotted, so right now, anything I have for storage just gets rained on, snowed on, whatever. And the front side of building number three, when we had to take the, the existing structure that was deemed, which was just where the concrete pad is, when Dale wanted us to take it down, I, that was, like, so now I have a whole open wall in that building, so everything gets wet, everything gets rained, uh, snowed on, so part of me covering that up is to finish that concrete pad.
And that makes sense, you should be able to cover up those things.
I've wanted to cover it up for a year and a half.
It's automotive trucking repair?
No repair. I don't have, I do not, I do not touch any, I don't have any, I don't have any vehicles, I don't do any auto body, I don't do any painting, I just buy and resell. That's it.
Okay.
And the construction, I have some woodworking equipment inside, that is where I run my construction business. We do all of our work in Boston, I used to be in Massachusetts. I'm from Maine, so moving down here was an hour and a half closer to back home, and that is, it's just storage for my construction, and it is my office.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Yeah, so I'm not clear on a couple things, I guess, on four, number four, and this, you know, Scott mentioned it's, it doesn't meet up with the setbacks, in particular, it looks like there's a wetland there that, you know, they're maybe within the 75 feet or whatever protective area there is. Do we, does that require, if it's a new construction, does that require some sort of variance on that 75 feet setback? I guess.
Reconstruction, so.
Yeah. Is there a picture of that in here?
Yeah, and it's an existing structure.
Did that building number four originally have a roof over it?
Building number, sorry, the, the structure? The structure, yes, it had, it had an existing roof on it, which was plywood, and it had a metal roof on it, and that was completely caved in, so in order for me to save the steel, and literally, it's, I mean, I don't know if I can even call it structure, I mean, it's at least, it's door post and a steel beam that goes over the top, and it just slanted down, there's two of those. In order for me to save that, where it didn't cave in and cause problems with building number three, which is still standing with no problems, I had to remove all of the plywood that was caved in.
Sounds like a lean-to storage.
That's all, yeah, that, it's open, I mean, I backed my trailer in there, so I don't have to shovel snow. But it's.
So is this the back of that building where the staging?
That is, yes.
So there's a cement floor there?
There's a.
So there's already impervious something, man-made?
I mean, I didn't put it in there.
Well, it's there.
That's correct.
Yeah, if you look at the.
I just want to cover that.
If you look at the plan where the number four is highlighted in green?
Yes.
Right below that, there's a stippled little, like, eight-foot apron, that's concrete.
That's what you're looking at on that.
The rest of that is dirt.
Is dirt?
Yeah.
All right, so we go back to the question, do we need to do something with the setback to add onto the back of, it says reconstruct, but to add on the back of that, it looks like it's?
Well, the floor is dirt, but there is still a structure there, that you were looking at, the steel structure beams, that's still in place.
I just want.
So there's no addition going on.
Yeah, I just want to put them, I just want to cover it over. So we have, so.
We got to deal with some requirements. Dirty there, and then we can deal with it.
So water runoff drainage from these new things, is this, we're looking at the lot next door, and it looks like there's a lot of wetlands over there, and it's pretty flat, so water doesn't have a chance to go anywhere. Is there a drainage plan out here with this at all?
There isn't, it's, it's a very porous soil, so it, right now, there's no, you don't have any drainage issues.
So when, when Tommy did the driveway from the DOT, there is a drain right there, which that comes down to.
So one of the, when we were here last time for a change of use, I think it was, it was a big, we had to go through DOT to get a new DOT permit, and part of that was improving the drainage at the front of the entrance, and, which collected that lower, if you look at the number four building to the left, there's a wetland to the left of it, that collects all that water, and it runs under the driveway, runs under Route Four and off to the other shade property. But other than that, inside the site, it's a, it's a very sandy soil, it's, there's really no issues with drainage on it, and adding.
It's, it, there's really no issues with drainage on it and adding 5,700 square feet of impervious is minimal.
Any other questions?
You've owned this property for like four years now, right? Give or take?
Yeah, I think 2021 we came in.
I officially owned it four and a half months ago.
Well, yeah, right.
I mean, when I took the building over, um-
I mean, I walked this property back when the town acquired it.
Yeah. And when we took, when the town acquired this whole big parcel, I actually walked where you were.
I remember the house, I thought it was more of a house, but that wasn't that. I mean, you came into the gate, but that's, that's years ago, so.
In hindsight, it was number three. Yeah, I mean, hindsight is 2020, but when I took the property over, I mean, there was no heat, there was no-
No, no, I'm just saying, I remember the structure, I remember the structure. I walked all the way around it, 'cause then I walked over to see the USA brings. It's a nice site, happy to see that somebody like you are, is actually taking upon yourself to actually do something with it. You know, in the industrial space and to do what you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, a big part of this is, I just want to, I mean, since I moved in, there's been an open wall on building number three, so I mean, I've got, I've got a bunch of stuff in there and it's like you drive in and that's all you see. And I just, I'd like to close it out, I'd like to close it out.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Okay.
Is there, I think this is more of a Scott question. Is there a reason to be submitting a site plan for this rather than just permits to add on to the building? Is it because of commercial industrial, you change anything?
Yeah, we're adding, adding square foot to the use, so, yeah.
Didn't seem like a lot, did it?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
What did we want if we didn't have?
Even a change of, even a change of use, we have to come to the board, so.
Yeah, but you know, a change in the-
Minimum, minimum site plan like this still, I think, requires planning board approval.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Please, Blair, did you want to cover any of the other comments from either you or Ed?
Uh, no, I, you know, everything that I was trying to bring your attention had some, you know, gray area to it. It wasn't, it wasn't clear where something would fall. So I think we've talked about a lot of it and if the board's satisfied, you know, I, the additions are not impactful on a five-acre site. And it's all where it's supposed to be, it's along, you know, the town's commercial industrial corridor. So I think it's in line with everything. And I just wanted to highlight those issues, just to consider.
And even a lot of Ed's comments were addressed, because it was the impervious. Any proposed additional lighting going to be happening? Need to comply with the zoning, it's all downward facing, not reaching beyond?
Yeah.
Didn't discuss any of that at all yet, I don't believe?
If you have lighting on your building, it's, it just has to be down lighting. That's it, I mean, it needs to be safe, you have to follow building codes to make sure entranceways and the stuff and exits are lit.
Yeah, can I just say one, like right now, I don't have lighting on that, because I'd like to. It would make things a little bit easier for me when you pull in, so.
Yeah.
There's no lighting there. They might be hooked up now because of the building.
Yeah, yeah, I got a place to put a panel.
Yeah.
Which I'd like to. The only lighting, the only lighting that's on the property right now is on-
Isn't there a pole, a light at the gate?
There is, yes, yeah, I love it, I want to put lights on, facing down.
Yeah.
It would illuminate the property, it's dark back there.
Um, if you do, unless there's already existing poles, I think it's probably gonna have to be subsurface conduit, so.
There is a pole.
Okay.
And there's a light on it, just not hooked up.
Yeah, gotcha.
They're good, they're building lights.
Yeah, I just have motion lights on the other two buildings right now, so I'm pulling that light when I pull in.
He also mentions the setback for the wetlands. He says with, the structure referenced in photo one is zoning relief needed due to proposed reconstruction within the 100-foot setback and/or wetland setback. And which, is that, are we going back to number four with that? Is photo one number four? Okay, 'cause I'm like lost with these.
This one here.
That's this one, am I black and white? Okay.
Because you have two setbacks, you have the wetland setback, you also have the 100-foot. You know, boundary setbacks. It seems like they overlap almost identically. And it, it looks like you're only showing the wetland setback at that point, because that's deeper in, is that?
We're showing all the setback and that wetland comes into that building setback a little bit, trims off that building setback.
So that would be the more applicable one, that's why it takes a little jog, because it's following the wetland that's right in front of it.
Because this is the boundary line, right?
The boundary is 100-foot setback, wetland's 50, so.
Right there?
Yes, yes, that's the boundary line.
This one?
Yep.
So, but this is the building we're talking about.
Yep.
So it's, the wetlands over here that were, I'm trying to figure out how this is too close to the boundary, because it looks like it's-
It's not too close to the boundary, it's too close to the wetland buffer on that one, on that side. On the lower side of that building, it's too close to the lower boundary.
Yes.
See how it goes through the corner of the building right there?
Yes, I'm wondering, yeah.
That's your 50-foot setback from this wetland.
Gotcha.
This is your 100-foot setback from there.
Why does it not say that to me?
I don't know, I trust me a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Where's the 70?
That's your same one, but 50-foot, 100-foot's there, 100-foot's there, 100-foot's there. This represents-
A 100-foot setback right there.
From here to here, from the property lines or the thing, so.
Ay yi yi. They're not easy to make. Alright, so. Is there, Blair, an issue?
I mean, it doesn't seem like the board has a problem with what he's proposing to do, because it's, it's there and, you know, there, it was there prior to, it's, it's basically just, you know, it's grandfathered in. It's this way, I'm, I'm hearing it, the way it's being explained.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a lot of new structure, they're redoing the same structure.
Yes. My comment was based on the way it was written, it was sounding like it was fire, you got 12 months, yada, 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 you lose your thing. So it sounds like we're good, but now that, the way they've explained it.
Alright, according to Ed, it's, see, if it was abandoned more than two years ago, was it? Abandoned more than two years ago?
I don't think that's the issue at this time.
The non-conformance protection goes away, see zoning ordinance, article three, U 3A B. Article three, U 3A B.
I don't think it was abandoned, because he's still using it as storage.
Yeah.
I'm still using it, it's just everything inside is left.
Okay.
Yes.
So then there was no abandonment?
Right. And that's the same thing with the fire, you have 12 months or it's considered to be abandoned and therefore you lose, you lose it. But it doesn't sound like that's the case here. When I read it originally, that's, you know, it sounded like it was applicable, same thing with Ed, but I think they've kind of-
I do have pictures before I tore that building down and it-
Do you have a picture of the back of that building? Do you have a picture of the back of that building?
The ones I submitted show, it was kind of greened in by vegetation when I took the pictures, but.
Okay, and the rest of it, you already mentioned, your DOT permit is all set and no further change in use. So, alright, what do you guys want to do? Hmm? Yes, but do you have any other? Alright, you guys go ahead and have a seat, we'll open the public hearing now. Here it is. Stop it. Alright, it is 7:40, I'm opening the public hearing. Anyone for this application, here to speak to it? Anybody against? Anybody either way, for or against? No comments? That was quick, woo-hoo! Alright, it's still 7:40. Okay, guys.
I'll make, oh, I'll make, um, approve the application for case number 24-010 SIT, real estate, five-year term by the road. I think there's two conditions that might apply to this. One is that the improvements that are made do not increase, are not increased into the setbacks.
Further.
And the lights meet the light code, the lights that are put in meet the light.
The condition, lighting code, and what was the first one?
Improvements are not increased into the setbacks further.
And is, do we need to do a proposal for proposed subject for building three? We're showing it here, is that already covered?
It would be required for occupancy permit, Dale would require that anyways.
I was just gonna say, since the buildings are pre-existing, the lighting on it is, obviously, we have zoning ordinances that tell you how and what you have to do for lighting. If you don't fall into those, the town will be after you.
Oh, sure.
Non-against zoning, and you'll be paying more money to us.
I'd rather not do that.
So when you want to talk about a sign in front of the roof, a six sign, we have zoning ordinances on that. No blinking lights, this is what it can be, it can be illuminated for this time, it's all written in our non-against zoning ordinance.
Yeah, Dale gave me that, he gave me a cup, so I have to have, like a sign company design it, I gotta bring it in and show you. I don't want any lights out front, I just want a sign.
So some of those, the lighting thing, he's gonna automatically have to, when Dale inspects the building, so when he does his construction, Dale will be there looking at all that.
I just wanted to highlight the fact, no worries.
So.
I just don't think it should be in the condition or one of the things, that's why I just bring it up.
I hear you, that's all I needed, yeah.
So you want it staying?
Well, you can just put it, really.
If it makes you feel better, you can put it in there.
Alright, there was a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve the application 24-0 dash, 24-010, boy, it's gonna be a long night. And with conditions, that there not be any increase on the setbacks with the reconstruction and that the lighting is per the zoning ordinance. Is there any further discussion?
Just a quick-
Increase further.
Is that not what I said?
No, I just, I just want to make sure.
Okay. I, I thought that's what I said.
We had discussed a little bit about having a condition to add a note about the impervious surface, total impervious surface of the site. Do we maybe want to amend the motion to include that? I know that we've issued that it's 25% or 21%, no, we're close to it, but it would be prudent to add that condition as well.
Is that okay with you? On the final copy of the?
Approval.
Approval, that there be a annotation as to the total footage?
Just a total number kind of thing?
Correct.
Yep, that's right.
Total, total area, percentage area, okay. Right, Doug, you seconded, you still, okay, you still good with that? Alright, any, anybody else? Be good, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, it's okay, it's seven zero zero.
Thank you.
For luck, we do business.
Moving on.
You don't fix rest buckets, huh? You don't just fix rest buckets?
Alright, moving on, the second case is.
Mill Pond.
Case number 24-011 sub, that's York, 206 Mill Pond Road. Application from Jones and Beach Engineers Incorporated on behalf of Mill Pond Realty Investments LLC, requesting approval for a four-lot conventional subdivision at 206 Mill Pond Road in Nottingham. The property is identified as tax map 24, lot number two. Hello.
A little weird being on this side of the table.
It's weird having you there.
Good evening, Ian McKenna with Jones and Beach Engineers, here tonight with me is Mike Gerphey of Gerphey Real Estate. The applicant, so I'll give you guys a brief overview and happy to get into details more once, if it's accepted. As stated, so this is map 24, lot two, approximately, uh, is 15.2 acres based on a survey, a little bit different than the tax map. But that's pretty standard. This property is located in the residential agricultural zone, but also the aquifer protection district. The property is really spurling to what on the map is shown as two different portions of frontage. Piece on the east and the west of a home that was kind of chopped out at one time there in the middle. The, there is an existing home with an address of 206 Mill Pond Road, so that's on the east side, that bottom corner of the plan there, and that's a three-bedroom home that is intended to remain. The existing property is, if you drive by, is roughly half wooded and half field, it's been maintained for quite some time. The most notable feature through the property is the existing New Hampshire Electric Co-op Transmission Line. They actually, this past, in that March storm, they had to replace two poles in that field. So that's why that portion of town was out there in four days earlier this year. There are two existing wetland areas on the property, on the, both on the north side. Both part of one wetland, just two different pieces cross into the property. And then the only thing I'll state is that with the application, we did submit hydrogeologic study as required under the aquifer protection district, so that has been provided from Ed Rock Strategies. And so we're here tonight requesting review of an application to break off three frontage lots from the property. So that would leave the existing home remaining on the existing lot two and then the creation of lots two dash one, two dash two, and two dash three. The, because of the, we are in the aquifer protection district, we do have a minimum lot area of three acres. So the existing home will remain on a three-acre lot, 3.01 to be exact. Lot two dash one, 4.88 acres, lot two dash two is 4.32. And then the westernmost or on this plan, plan north, that lot is proposed at three acres. Each lot has more than the 200 feet of required frontage. And then, on the plan, I use the term building envelope, but I have corrected it since and I do have some, an updated one by 17th Board cares, but we have provided the lot envelope area. And we did try to depict that with a dashed line on the plan, and we're happy to discuss that. We are showing some potential driveways, we recognize that we would have to seek approval from the road agent for any driveway locations, and we suspect some of them will be shifted based on field observations. They have been staked, I actually went out there the other day and put a stake in the ground with a flag for two of them. One of them was flagged right to a small oak that was right on the street. And then the plan to show, again, a potential house, really just for reference, specifically in reference to the proposed well with radius and 4K area that a septic system can be placed in. This, there are two existing power lines that cross the property from the transmission lines. Those are single-phase power lines that actually run and serve just a couple homes on Mill Pond Road. Co-op does not have overhead single-phase that runs this whole length of Mill Pond Road here. We have already been in contact with Co-op and although it's hard to get in touch with them, they have assured us that they, they are working on plans to move that single-phase service and likely will be putting single-phase power out into the roadway to serve these homes instead of crossing the open field as they do now. The last thing to mention, 'cause I know it's a subject of interest in previous cases, there is a burial ground on the site, actually, we took quite some time, including some ground penetrating radar. Actually, we took quite some time, including some ground penetrating radar, to both the deed but also in the field locate what we could regarding what's called the Langley Burial Ground. It is registered with the town cemetery group. They didn't have any more information than we had gathered ourselves. The headstones for this burial ground are right on the, you know, they're within four feet of the stone wall. So one thing that we looked into is trying to locate potential burial sites via the ground penetrating radar. We did find what, I mean, they were old, in 1800s. We found what looked like three anomalies, which we can assume associated with the three headstones. The deed research and a lot of case law research, the burial ground was not a reservation, so we see a lot of cemeteries where it's a reservation. The, it was a, I believe it was called a life estate that went with the cemetery, so it actually, it is not a reservation. It actually, that ended, the rights to that burial ground and to use it ended with the death of a gentleman who grand it. But what we're showing is, it's essentially, it's him, his wife, and his daughter, both 1800s, is we're showing a proposed easement instead to memorialize, and that's actually why we did the ground penetrating radar, so we could kinda locate ourselves. And so we've established both in a roughly square easement area around that burial ground and also an access easement that we're showing to the west so that an ancestor could, in theory, have legal right to access that area in perpetuity.
Ian, where's that cemetery located?
Yep, I'll show you on the plan. It's, it's hard to see on the plan, it's very visible in the field. It's right in the middle.
Okay.
For 2-2. And that was one of the things we did a lot of research on to, obviously it would affect the design, is if it was a reservation, it technically would be a different lot and be a break-in frontage. But our surveyors assured us, and it was a lengthy review process of research and hunting down case law, both in New Hampshire, Mass., religious industry-wide. And so we are showing on this, although it's not being proposed as a, again, a separate piece of land, we are showing what would be the 25-foot easement and we are proposing that we would monument the easement so that there could be a measurement taken. That 25-foot setback from that burial ground would still fall within the 50-foot front setback. So in theory, it's, would have no impact on any construction on these lots.
Okay.
There'd be an easement or something in the deed for this, about state?
Yep. And we made sure it would be just on the deed for this one lot, yep.
Okay.
And currently, and I think maybe the best location for the driveway for this lot is, actually where the, it's roughly where the existing opening in the stone wall is with two wood posts. This easement wouldn't, we wouldn't propose a driveway crossing that easement. The better sightline, the safer sightline is to the east on that frontage. So we have submitted for NHD State Subdivision Approval, just 'cause that process can take some time, so we've at least started the process. And other than that, I did, Blair passed along both his staff memo and Ed's comments since he couldn't be here tonight. So we have reviewed those and are happy to discuss them further after plan acceptance or application acceptance.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you look at my memo, there wasn't a lot of items that I brought up. The waiver, Ian, the waiver file document wasn't signed. Is that, I'm just confirming, there's no waiver request, right?
Yeah.
So no waiver requests. Everything is here for an application, a proper application before you. There are a few things to discuss. You can see those in my memo, but none of that would impact your decision on accepting the application nor would these have any impact on DRI. So I do believe you can accept it. My opinion is that does not rise the level of a DRI if for no other reason, they're not proposing any new roadway. They're all frontage lots, but leave that to the board to decide.
Okay, so no waivers? Not DRI? Anybody else have anything, comment? All right, do we want to?
Of course.
Yes. Go for it.
Okay.
Wait, we have to approve the application. So is your question going to be?
Oh.
Accept the application? That's, yes, that's what I'm saying. Is this related, is your question related to that?
No, it's after.
Okay, so then let's, let's.
But there are a couple questions.
I'll take a motion to accept the application as complete. Anybody? And you can include in it if you want.
Make it a motion.
And not a regional impact. Same thing.
Okay, I will make a motion.
Chris, okay.
Okay, on case number 24-011 for a subdivision on Mill Pond Road to accept that application as complete, on map 24, lot two, sorry, 15.1 acres, to accept the application as complete.
Tim, that's not an impact.
Yeah, go ahead and.
Well, that was a second motion.
You can put it all into one.
I can.
You can, I will let you.
And that it is not a case of regional impact in our findings.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
You'll second, thank you Buzz. It's been moved and seconded, that we accept the application as complete and not a case of regional impact. Is there any further discussion on that? No, let's vote, all those in favor, select my, by saying aye.
Aye.
7:00, okay. Now, if you would, if you would like, your application's been accepted as complete, you can draw your line.
Sure, I think the only thing that I wanted to cover is just briefly that, you know, I had received both a staff memo and Ed's comments. The, let's see. I was just gonna go through them real quick, just, I did get them yesterday. I both have an 11 by 17 that would show you some of the things I'll discuss.
Ed's comments.
No.
We haven't received it, okay.
You, I do, go ahead.
So Ian, we don't have a copy of Ed's comments yet, so if you would.
Do you wanna read them in and I'll respond? Or I have it, I can read it from it, that's up to you.
Whatever you would like.
I give it to Ed, he's always very good about putting his comments onto paper, which I appreciate. So Ed's first comment was, there was some initial question when we submitted the application, whether it was a major subdivision or a minor subdivision. The ordinance reads that a major is the creation of four more lots. And we were wondering, we're only creating three lots, but in the end, we paid the fees for a major subdivision, so at this point, we're moving forward under that assumption. But I think he was just kinda reiterating, that was on email chain that went back and forth, again, initiated submission. Number two, buildable area calculation needs to be based off of 50-foot from all property lines. And then he pointed to Article 2, C3A, setback from 50, yep, and that. So that was, that was an error my part for not showing the 50-foot. We were looking at it. I'll jump to the next one though, 'cause it kinda, they go in hand in hand. He says, once lot envelopes are revised, confirm proposed lot 2-1 meets the definition of lot envelope. And then, so he gives the definition, just copy and paste the definition of lot envelope, but he does bold and he says the emphasis is his. The requirement for the 30,000 contiguous square foot area shall be adequate width and depth as to not create an hourglass effect of less than 50 feet at the narrowest point.
Right.
So that was one that, I do have some overrides on my 17s and have to hand out if you'd like, that we've made an adjustment, at least a small tweak to what was submitted to you, that we can meet the 50-foot based on how we're showing the lot envelope.
Okay.
And that was 2-1, right?
This lot, right, here.
No, it was an hourglass-shaped one.
Yeah.
You've chosen the 75 feet of mill before there wasn't a measurement.
Right, so I, we met the 75, there's a, there is a requirement also that a lot cannot, a lot line, from lot line to lot line, cannot be less than 75 feet. But there's also, in this case, because we are proposing lot envelope to pass through that area, that would actually govern because that has a 50-foot minimum width. So I do have plans that I can hand out to show that and really all of it, it was a shift of the lot line between 2-1 and 2-2 that provide that extra width. Let me get back to his, I would've printed it, but my printer decided to run out of ink today.
Curb cuts was the next one?
Yep, proposed curb cuts. So again, referencing, ideally, we wanna locate curb cuts or new driveways across from existing driveways. So there was a comment about the lot 2-3, so that's plan north of the furthest west on Mill Pond, about that driveway being located 20, 25 to 50-foot east, so I think he's trying to pull that plan south, so that would line up with the 211 Mill Pond driveway. The only thing there is that, that we're on the inside of a curve. I think that's really gonna be a balance of, and that might, again, something we'll discuss with the road agent, 'cause we do have to file a driveway permit, is finding where you place yourself. There's actually decent sightlines, it's just, as I think we all know, Mill Pond is a cut-through road and people don't exactly follow the 25 mile per hour speed limit. I was just there yesterday putting stakes in the ground and glad I was wearing yellow.
Same today. So that driveway had a big drop-off too, where it was kinda sketched in next to the power line.
Yeah, so that whole lot, that's where that elevation changed. It's a little unclear if there was potentially something there that was carved out, 'cause it's a pretty severe, probably likely maybe the road was put in, it was just a fill slope, but if you, once you get in about 100, 50 to 100 feet from the property, about 100 feet where we're proposing a potential house site, the way the slope wraps around there is actually really nicely suited for, say, a drive-under house or something like, drive-under garage. But the driveway, we'll have plenty of length there that it's not gonna be a severe drop-off. We should have plenty of space to have a, you know, somebody's not stopped at the end of the driveway on a 10, 15% slope trying to get out. We'll be able to beat the town's 8% driveway grade. And then Ed's last one, his last comment was, consider making this a minor three-lot subdivision by combining 2-1 and 2-2 and adjusting the proposed line. Just to, I guess at that point, you would just level out the lots. And then to jump to Blair's, Blair had a question about test pit eight being in the 4K area. I did look at that today, it is just inside, I did confirm the survey points, so that's, test pit eight is on lot 2-3 within that 4K area. We did confirm that it is, it is within, what we're showing is the setback to, the 20-foot setback that the septic system has to make. It just squeaks inside that corner, which is good on us 'cause we were kinda guessing when we were out there taking tests. And then Blair's number two comment was, again, related to the 50-foot setback, which is now on the plan. And then number three, it was a question of what will happen with the power lines, which I said is, Co-op has agreed that they do need to move those single-phase services. The transmission line, that is protected by an easement, which is shown on the plan, paralleling the poles, 30-foot wide easement. But the service lines, I think, were just run out of convenience across the field and wasn't obviously impactful to mowing it for many years, so. We've already had to start the conversation that they'll be locating some single-phase infrastructure within the roadway instead of just across the field.
Do we need some underground utilities on a new lot?
So the new lots will be. So the new homes, ideally, when that single-phase power is relocated to be within Mill Pond Road, ideally on existing poles, any existing homes that take power from ultimately the transmission lines would still receive their power from that. And the new homes would likely construct, and where we have some shared frontage here, Co-op would likely install a new pole on our side of the road as a drop pole. And then from there to the house, they would all be underground power for all three new homes. So that, they're requiring for the town for underground power.
And that's on the applicant's burden to deal with the poles and moving the poles and all, cost or whatever.
That hasn't been sorted out with Co-op because it was kind of just, as far as we could tell, the easement didn't grant the right to just install lines across the field. The transmission, which is a high-powered transmission line, which ultimately sent power down to the pit, that's protect, that's very clear, that's within a deed of easement. It's the service lines off of it that are a little gray and so that's where Co-op is said they'll work with us to relocate those.
Excellent.
Was there an issue with those service lines this past winter?
Yeah, so I know one of the poles, so the longer stretch, there's at least one pole that was snapped in half and I believe another one more was damaged. So they did have quite a bit of equipment out there. And that's due to, there was two different pines on the north side that fell. There's still some remnants of them out in the field, but, yeah.
Do they have access to that easement on this, anywhere on these four sites?
No, so the easement language reads their activity's supposed to be contained within the 30-foot easement.
Yeah.
So when the issue happened, they, you know, if you drive in the field, it's not a smooth field anymore because they had the tracked vehicles out there. Understanding an emergency, they just used the field and unloaded and traveled across that. In theory, via their deeded access easement, they would have to come in, if these homes are here, they'd have access either from Mill Pond, these lines do come down just to the west of our site and they follow the roadway. We haven't researched that property, but I would assume if they have a 30-foot easement over ours, they would have it on either side. And then obviously, many of you might be aware, they cleared the easement in this area pretty heavily. I think it was last year, and you can see that from Smoke Street, where it intersects with Smoke Street, so. They do have a deeded access rights, likely from where it intersects with Mill Pond Road on the abutting lawn.
Would make sense, okay.
Ian, can you expand on the scenic road requirements, which, to be honest, I'm not finding or knowledgeable about?
I don't believe Mill Pond is designated as a.
I thought I saw that somewhere on the, there was a scenic road.
It shouldn't have been in our application, but I'll pull up the, yeah, the, if I go to the subdivision regulations, appendix two, it's not designated as a scenic road.
Yeah, I.
So if it wasn't, if it wasn't in application, it would've been an error, but it's not a, any worry. It would've been noticed as that, which would've been a problem, but, yeah, it is, it's not listed by the town as a scenic road.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Can we see the, this edited plan?
Sure. So this plan, I did, I did cloud it so that you kinda see the changes and I can walk through it.
Jesus.
This is a pond?
Oh, the one that's on the adjacent property?
Yeah, the lot. You have just lot 2-3, this right over there.
Isn't that a pond?
I'm not as aware of being named, well, it's adjacent to with a dog in life, but that's separated from.
Well, you got the road that goes, you got.
Yeah, it's a poor hill, yep.
Right, but on this map here, you listed all the, the Mill Pond over here, you listed the pond there, why don't you make that blue for water?
Well, that's.
Of course, yes. Well, yeah, okay, cool.
The, it's not a name, it's not a named body of water, it certainly is a wetland and that's why that wetland extends on to our property. I think what you'll see is, that's one, that's likely one of those cases where the center part of that is still a wetland and I don't know, I'm not a wetland scientist, I don't know if it qualifies as a swamp. There is certainly a year-round water presence on the site. And so one of the things on our plan is we, we show a 75-foot setback from all the wetlands. Part of that is we have the wetlands delineated, but at least off our current design, whether it's poorly drained or very poorly drained, doesn't really affect our lot envelopes. So, yeah, it's, it definitely one of them where the, it changes from poorly to very poorly. I mean, if it has standing water year-round, it's very poorly.
That's such a, I mean, I just strip it out of time, so.
Yeah.
I just noted because, you know, you got the pond across the street over there, you got the other pond.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Ian.
Other than that, I think we've got everything else on the plan. So what you, the plan in front of you here.
Close that, please. Thank you.
I'll give it a second. What you have here is, you can kinda see a middle area there, what you'd consider the hourglass portion of 2-1. And what I've done is, it was about a six-foot offset between the lot line And what I've done is, it was about a six-foot offset between the, the lot line between two dash one and two dash two. I kept the same bearing and just offset it, and what that did is gave us the extra distance, so that provides the fifty-foot uh, width for the lot envelope, and, um, we're now over the seventy-five foot minimum from lot line to lot line, we're at ninety-five now. So that was the plan change, and obviously because there was a shift in the lot line there, it constituted a small change, a slight increase to lot two dash one and a slight decrease of two dash two, but two dash two still has four point two acres. Less than point zero five decrease.
But for the, for, for two dash one, you're thirty thousand, you're meeting your thirty thousand lot envelope in the back, correct?
Um, no, so we're holding, and this is where, honestly, I think when I saw where you were, it was a little tricky, is the, the, if you look at a lot envelope, it's kind of you have the HUD for some other definitions, so one of them was unfit for building, um, I, one of those is easements is not, is not called out in there, so we probably could have crossed, but what we've held in this sense is that there's an existing transmission line with a defined easement boundary.
Yep.
So we've treated that easement boundary as our cutoff. So we're showing, it's that kind of thicker dash line that we've tried to not have a bunch of lines over each other, but, uh, we're showing the lot envelope with that thicker dash line. And that's what that sixty, you know, for example, lot two dash one, it's that front, so basically everything between the road and the power line easement within, you know, the setback is the sixty-seven, six-six-five. And so as you go, we also did depict what it is for the existing home and the three-acre lot that it will remain on.
But it has to be contiguous. Are you saying that, that, that the, and, and, and it doesn't include the fit for building, the, the, does not include setbacks? So you have to take it from the fifty-foot, right?
So that's why I had some notes, because, uh, let me see, I'm just going to flip to some of the definitions, but I have them here.
I don't think you have to necessarily locate your house in the, I don't believe that's a stipulation, but you, I think you have to show a fifty, a thirty K contiguous.
Yeah, so I, I did some notes, and I'm happy to send this to you too, so I'm just going to flip to the two things that I have to kind of read from. So, I think, does everybody understand what Blair's kind of getting at? That the lot envelope we're showing is following the twenty versus the fifty, so that's where, and Mike, I think, spent about an hour on the phone yesterday making sure we understood why we were showing this way too, which we did quite some time ago. So even with the fifty-foot setback shown on this plan now, um, the, we end up going to the definition of lot envelope, uh, which is both, it's identical between the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. It's great. So we're essentially requiring a two-hundred by two-hundred foot square, or a minimum of thirty thousand square foot contiguous square foot upland buildable soil area, depicted on a platter building permit, which is being designated a suitable area that can meet all local and state requirements. And it goes on to say, the thirty thousand square foot area shall also be of adequate width and/or depth, so as not to create an hourglass effect of less than fifty feet, that's what we talked about before. And then the last sentence there, the lot envelope shall not include here either areas unfit for building and their appropriate setbacks or building setbacks. So then, if you go to the definition of unfit for building, which I had, unfit for building, uh, any land which is classified as floodplain, wetland by soil type, uh, watershed protection area, excessive slope at twenty-five percent or more, drainage ways, or where soil tests indicate unsuitability for subsurface waste disposal. Um, so we do reflect the wetland setback. Uh, that, so out of that list, uh, we don't have any, via the slope, the analysis of the existing topography, we don't have any slopes that are triggered over the twenty-five percent, even with some of those steeper slopes on two dash three, they don't qualify as twenty-five percent. Out of that list, uh, there's actually no floodplain that extends onto the property, and then, um, there is the wetlands, so we do hold the seventy-five foot as any sort of restriction on the lot envelope. And then it was pointed to that, uh, or kind of in my, our reading of it, is Article Two zoning ordinance, so this is essentially the agricultural residential zone. C two E also kind of has a slightly modified, longer definition of, of lot envelope, so it, uh, it says each lot must contain a two-hundred by two-hundred foot square, or the thirty thousand square foot lot envelope in which a house and septic system shall be placed to meet all existing setbacks or, uh, all setback ordinances, uh, consisting of upland soils. So based on those readings, um, it's not great that in the lot envelope definition, there's no definition of upland buildable soil, it just, um, it says suitable area that can meet all local and state requirements. So what we ended up kind of saying is, okay, this area via the zoning ordinance definition is the area in which both the house and septic shall be placed. Right in that same article, the zoning ordinance is the setbacks, so, uh, for a dwelling, fifty foot, and then, uh, between lot frontage, uh, and saying accessory structures, so the front setback for anything is fifty feet. But on the sidelines, the fifty-foot structure, uh, setback is for dwelling, but a septic system can be within twenty feet, um, of a sideline. So where the, the article, C...
Along with accessory structures as well.
Right, and along with accessory structures. So C two E, Article C two E is the one that added, in my opinion, more definition as to the intent of lot envelopes, because it says the lot envelope in which a house and septic system shall be placed. So if that's the intent, we have to look at both the fifty and the twenty-foot setbacks. So what we've shown is that the potential house on these three lots can be located within the fifty-foot setback, and that our four K areas, both, having both test pits within the four K area, can also be located within the twenty-foot setback for that system, so it's, it's honestly the first time I've had to look at a project like this. I, I was trying to think back to previous applications. It was coming up blank.
I, I mean, if you look at, if you look at the definition of lot envelope, the last sentence to me seems pretty clear. Lot envelope shall not include either areas unfit for building and their appropriate setbacks, so a wetland and its setback, or building setbacks. So, I, the fifty, the thirty K area has to be inside of the fifty-foot setback.
Well, it's, it's, now, just to jump in, and we, Ian and we were, Ian and I were on the phone for a while discussing this. I think you need to, first of all, I think you need to look at what the intent of that lot envelope is. It's not a building envelope, which is kind of nice, just that it's called a lot envelope. It's intended to make sure that you're creating lots as a planning board that have adequate space to fit your main house, your accessory structures, sheds and barns and septic systems and wells and with their radiuses, it's, it's a lot envelope, it's not a building envelope. So I think that's, that's the first thing to kind of point out. But I do think that definition says and, so it's their appropriate setbacks or building setbacks. So it's not just dwelling setbacks, it's building setbacks, so it's any structures. So I think it's clear that, you know, based on, it to us in any way, based on the setback requirements and the ordinance, that you do have to include both the twenty and the fifty. Uh, now, having said that, I do believe we could still achieve the thirty feet if we had to, um, thirty thousand square feet, rather, if we had to hold the fifty-foot setback line. But we'd be going over the power line easement and into the, the uplands to the back of the property, which we could do if we wanted to demonstrate compliance with a more restrictive interpretation, but it then, I think, with, it may end up causing more gerrymandered lines, lot lines, just to kind of fit into a, a more sort of restrictive definition or interpretation.
And I think the addition here too is the building, the building setbacks is where, if you go back to lot envelope in that C two, I keep forgetting whatever that reference is there, is the house and septic, is that when we go to get a building permit, we also have to show that a septic system is part of the building component. So we've interpreted the building setbacks to be whether it's your house, a septic, you can't build a house without a septic.
So let's be clear here, a lot of talk is going on.
Yeah, I think you just have to go with precedence.
Make sure that members of the board, everybody's clear of what we're actually talking about, or why we're having this discussion. You know, you meet your setbacks for, for where you proposed to put a house. Meet your twenty back for your septic, you meet the fifty for the house, it's a fact, the building envelope in that area, because of the short line, this is between the fifty feet area, is it continues to the back lot. If you continue the part from there, you get your thirty thousand total square feet, brings you to sixty-seven thousand square feet, right?
Well, for that particular lot, yes.
That's true. Now, you technically could put a driveway all the way, make a big lot out of the way back on the other side of the lot, and meet the full thirty thousand square feet of the building area with no...
Much longer driveway.
...line, or there's a huge driveway going all the way out back. So on this lot, there are two spots. Well, there's one definite spot, but the proposed spot is what's in question.
Right, because I know that in the past, the board doesn't like to see a bunch of lot envelopes trying, ideally, you're approving one lot envelope on each lot to be focused on.
I, I just, I think the board has to be consistent, and, and, and in my review, the consistency has been that the lot envelope is based on fifty-foot setback. It's based on the, the more restrictive, and if the definition says it, or building setbacks. So, um, you know, what to do with that information, uh, but I do believe you need to be consistent, and in, in all of my experience with this board is that, that fifty-foot setback is what establishes the, um, lot envelope. They are right, you, you, your four K area can extend into the fifty-foot setback, but it has to stay within the, the twenty-foot setback. But as far as establishing lot envelope.
I think that, and that's where...
That's been my experience.
Right, and that's where though the, now, I don't think I've ever read this section, re-read it as many times as I have since last night, that Article C two E, and that's where we're jumping between, I had to clip these definitions to make sure I had them on my papers, that article, in the zoning ordinance, Articles two, two, C two E talks about the lot envelope, but it adds definition that the lot envelope in which a house and septic system shall be placed, but if we're asked to adhere to just a fifty foot, then that's essentially saying, if we get a plan approved, that the septic system, if we're being told the house and septic system shall be placed, in theory, the board would be proposing a plan that if we came to, submitted a building permit that showed a septic system between the fifty and the twenty, that's not consistent with the approval that would have been granted to the board based on the line that was on the plan. And that's where I think it's, it's why I had to clip these to try and read them and...
Blair, I, I would agree with you that in the past, it was always a fifty-foot setback, but now if I read in, in Article two...
C two E.
C three A.
Oh, you're jumping that one, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, which is the setbacks. The other one's the envelope?
Yes.
This one's the setbacks. The side and rear property lines and, and accessory buildings and septic systems is twenty feet for all of the lots not pre-existing. So I think we have a problem in our zoning here somehow, but it, I remember it as always fifty feet, I was surprised to see this say twenty.
Well, if you kind of look back at what the intent was likely
Yeah.
at the time that you created this thirty thousand square foot envelope with a two-hundred by two-hundred box, it was so that you could make sure that you were approving plans that could fit all the stuff that one would put on a single-family house lot. So it's not just the dwelling, because why would you need a thirty thousand square foot envelope to fit your house on it unless...
But during that time, the four K area had to be within the fifty feet. So...
Interesting.
It, it was all based on that fifty feet.
Sure.
Something happened along the way here, which I think had to do with the non-conforming lots. If there were so many non-conforming lots, and we have a lot, where twenty feet is the side...
But tw- non-conformant doesn't apply here.
No, no, I, I understand that, but because there were so many, perhaps it changed over the years, I don't know, I don't, I don't remember this table being in the setback. I would remember it as fifty feet.
It is.
But it does, in that same table, thank you for pointing it out, it does say accessory buildings and twenty feet, and, um, this talks about buildings and their, or building setbacks, and that's a building. So I think that, I mean, it doesn't say house only, it says buildings, so if we had to read, it, it, it is confusing.
It is confusing.
So, so, so in the, in the, on the, in the notes, uh, in the revisions that Ian handed out, we do call out the different setbacks, the dwelling, accessory structures, septics, um, so it's more clearly defined, so we know what, we know what we're approving.
It's delineated very well there, we'll say that.
It's all because I had to make sense of it, but the sentiment that's instated is honestly what I remember as well. But obviously with, you know, with it, something, with, with it being a case of my own, it was something that I did, we did, I did spend quite a bit of time yesterday confirming this, even, obviously, we drew it that way, but, um, that's where it's, I recognize that there, I think there has been in the past, it's always been...
Two E has always been a big part of it.
Yeah, and I think it's just where, again, I went back to the zoning ordinance, and the language that states lot envelope in which a house and septic system shall be met, so that's why we, we should show both setbacks.
Should we make a motion and a corroboration to our interpretation of that, um, so that we can get that...
That is for like next week, uh, next time's meeting, on the twenty-eighth. And you were taking notes, is that part of what your notes were for that, Alana?
Yeah.
To add that into next meeting? Thank you, appreciate that. And Blair, where should, how should we move forward with this? What's your recommendation on this?
I mean, I've been pretty clear, I, I, I'm of the impression that they need to show thirty thousand square feet, that it's contiguous, that meets the fifty-foot setback, and that's where you place the house and the septic. I, I feel like that's what the board has been do, has been doing consistently.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I don't think you need to do something consistently bad all the time, but I don't, I'm not, I'm not hearing anything that would change this scenario.
Do you understand what I'm saying though with the fifty foot, like the, if we hold the fifty foot, and that is approved as the lot envelope? I can't, you're, you're approving that lot envelope as what I can put my house and my septic in, but yet the zoning ordinance allows me to put my septic up to the twenty foot. So that's where I have concern that...
Or, or buildings.
Or accessory buildings, yeah.
Accessory.
That that's where, in theory, if, uh, you know, Dale doesn't review the septic plans, but if, it comes with a building permit at that point, is we could get a, a state-approved septic plan right up to the twenty-foot setback, but then if Dale reviews the building permit against an approved plan, and you see the septic system over what is the, approved as the lot envelope boundary, if we hold the fifty, then that's a, that's where I think the ordinance would allow us to go to the twenty, but then the board would be voting on the fifty, yet the ordinance states the lot envelope is where the house and septic system will be in.
Now, interpretation, you know, the zoning ordinance towards a brand-new subdivision. The zoning ordinance, a lot of things were written in there to help affect pre-existing lots. So we're talking about not being in the, in the area to hold the fifty-foot setback, the septic, right?
Well, the zoning ordinance is written for any and all projects, whether it's a pre-existing non-conforming, a brand-new lot that's...
I mean...
Yeah, the pre-existing...
It's interpretation of how you, how you see this, and I understand where Blair's coming in.
Yeah.
You know, I understand where you're coming in, because again, you do meet twenty foot, which is for there.
Yeah.
And I think, I think...
But where does, how does lot two, three meet the fifty-foot setback contiguous area? I don't even... Like, what, what does that outline look like?
When, when you mean the fifty-foot contiguous?
So, well, yeah, that's the...
Well, if we had to hold the fifty feet, I think you'd see a different configuration of lots.
I think that's what we need to see.
And I, but I don't think that, I mean, I think to, just to shoehorn this subdivision into something that's being interpreted differently, I think is potentially just not necessarily great planning. We have lots that are as rectangular shape as we can, given the, given the triangular shape of the parent parcel, so we're kind of restricted to creating as best of a rectangular-shaped lots as we can. We believe they're compliant. I would, I would suggest that, I know you, you haven't done, it hasn't been bad planning, but if you've had an interpretation that's now in question, you know, you can always change your interpretation. you know, you can always change your interpretation if there's logic behind it. Not to say you've done bad planning in the first, but it's, if you're, if either the, if either the ordinance has been changed to allow that 20 feet to happen for accessory structures and septic systems, where it might have been 50 before, the ordinance interpretation may not really have changed, it's just that the setback-
I can tell you, having been on this board and the zoning board for a while, one of the main reasons we changed those setbacks was because of all of the requests for variances that we were getting on the zoning side, and it had a lot to do with the smaller lots and people needing relief from the 50-foot that it was all the way around. So, it wasn't to make things easier for new builds on lots where you've got the space. It was more for these, to provide relief to homeowners that are really kind of hedged in all the way around and needed greater relief. And we've been looking constantly at setbacks, because it's truly, setbacks are a big thorn for a lot of people. And that's all land that you own, but you can't use. And so, in fact, that's one of the things we're going to be discussing at our meeting in two weeks, is what are we going to do with these? Because it's, it's a problem.
It's an exciting meeting.
Pardon me?
It's an exciting meeting.
I just, I think the board has to be careful about changing that interpretation wholesale, that it's now a 20-foot setback for your 5, your 30K area.
It's not, it's still 50.
Right, so I think that it's not a planning issue, I think maybe it's a lot number issue, and it should pop, so you go down to three lots if you can't fit it in something with the 50, with the 50-foot setback.
Well, I guess my, I guess my point is we can't, I think we can fit, if we had to hold the 50 for the three, or for the four lots, we could still comply with the 30, but it's going to require some lot line reconfigurations out, really mainly out in the back of the property, beyond the power lines, to be able to sort of capture that 30,000 square feet, the additional that we would need out back there. We were, you know-
And we were kind of restricting ourselves to the easement.
Ian said, yeah, we were sort of holding that easement line. In fact, the proposed, the house, the house lot, Lot 2, the existing house, you know, we didn't, we didn't even draw the new lot lines to even have it be encumbered by that easement, just to kind of, just for, again, we're trying to create as uniform rectangular lots as possible. They're all three-plus acres, a couple of them, one is almost five acres in size. So, there's certainly plenty of land. I guess for illustrative purposes, we could show a plan that met this more strict definition with the 50 feet, but then as Ian said, now we're, now we're not potentially able to locate accessory structures within 20 feet or septics, which I guess, which would go against what the ordinance would allow. So, and maybe the question can't be answered tonight, maybe it needs to be something that we, you know, we, we go to outside, I don't know. Assuming you have counsel that maybe could weigh in on something like this, but I, where there might be some disagreement amongst members and staff, but-
I don't know that there's a, there's an interpretation issue, I think there's a visual image, like you need to show, you need to show that you can meet the zoning, and I don't think that's showing it right.
But that's where, the definition of lot envelope, obviously it has its own definition. And it talks about upland buildable soil, an item that's not defined. And really, it's fairly vague, except for the 30,000 contiguous, and the fact that it can't get less than 50-foot wide from lot envelope boundary to lot envelope boundary. But then if we go back to the zoning, which, that's where it states, that lot envelope is in which a house and a septic system shall be placed. So, when we're talking about building setbacks, that's why C3A has a 20-foot setback for accessory buildings and septic systems, which is typically called out for as what the lot envelope is supposed to entail. So, that's where the interpretation, I guess, question would come from, if we were to ask for, it's almost, I mean, it's, I know it's been stated before, I know the chairman doesn't like to govern by definition, but that's where if we go back to the non-definition portion in the zoning ordinance, it actually provides more detail that the lot envelope is where the house and septic system will be.
Yeah, I think if the-
That's the interpretation.
If the board's interpretation was that the septic can be outside of the 50-foot and held to the, as long as it holds the 20-foot, but that the 30,000 K has to be calculated based on a 50-foot setback, I feel like that would be in line with what they've seen before, if that's what they saw fit.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's more just showing that the 30K can be done with a 50-foot setback.
Yeah, I think, I think the argument that we're trying to make is that via the zoning ordinance language, that lot envelope of the, I'll just start, the 30,000 square foot area is what the house and septic should be in. So, if we're asked though to only show the 30,000 setback for where the house or dwelling will be, then we're kind of losing out on where the septic can be, even though the septic is allowed to be outside of what we define as the lot envelope. That's where, I agree that it's been interpreted that way in the past, and I think that's what we're saying is, I don't know how we'd go about
And I guess, I think, if we, if we had a subdivision plan that would go on record, maybe that subdivision plan doesn't include the lot envelope. And we have another plan sheet that's part of the set that shows the lot envelope. Because then we avoid that confusion, because in the future, when, again, we go to get a building permit for a shed, or a barn, or, you know, septic system, those can be in the 20, you know, up to the 20-foot setback. So, just to, so we don't create that confusion in the future. But I guess, in order to-
This will be the area that if they ask us to hold the 50,
Sure.
it's going to be 50 feet that way.
But in order to comply with the more strict interpretation, we would have to reconfigure some of these lots, and it would include the land out in the back of each of these lots that are on the other side, under the power line easement, and on the other, and on the other side.
Do we seek legal opinion and just table this for this moment? So that we can get, because I do see a conflict where it says, building setbacks here, and here's buildings, accessory buildings, it's, the building word is there, 20 feet. And then there is, as you mentioned, there's an exemption for non-conforming lots, but it's right in there, so clearly, that doesn't even-
The zoning ordinance there.
Reflect non-conforming lots, so this talks about a new one.
Definition.
To me, I think the 20-foot fits, but I know the other board members, what they're thinking is on that, it's-
If the board wants to go to town council, you have to be very clear about what the question is, and I don't know what the question would be here. I, you know, I would almost want to see them reconfigure the lots first. But, I, you know, a very strict interpretation of this, you know, might indicate a conflict, but I still don't believe that the applicant is showing anything that meets with the board's, you know, showing a 30,000 square foot area that has a house, a dwelling in it. I don't see that on, on 2-3.
If I were to formulate a specific request, you know, if it were to be typed to town council, it would be a request to review essentially the definition of lot envelope in both existing subdivision and zoning ordinance, but then review that definition against the language within that Article C2E that states lot envelope is in which a house and septic system shall be placed. So then, it's really with that in mind, that that's the clear language in the ordinance, is that then we would be asked though to ignore the septic system part and say just where the house will be.
And it's not even, it's not just the septic system, I think, if you're to look at, I think this, I think we can further maybe articulate how we interpret it.
Well, let me, let me just, this is going on and on, and we're getting nowhere. I feel like I'm a hamster on a wheel that's just going like this right now, or about anybody else, but the, we're not, nobody's agreeing here.
Yeah, that's, I think we agree, if there's a way though that we could, I don't know, I guess the town council's the only way, and I understand we'd have to formulate-
But, but what I want to ask you is, is there, what is your reason for not reconfiguring to show us the build, buildable envelope that we have always seen, and you have seen it before here, sitting here? Why, why?
We can, I think, I think what I'm saying, we can show you that-
I think we, I think we can obtain that, that configuration, I guess.
Then why don't we agree that you will come back with plans that will show us this building envelope that we are trying very hard to figure out, one way or another here on this, and we'll, we'll go from there with that.
That's fine, yeah.
Can you do that for the next meeting?
Yeah, that'll be the first meeting in September anyway, right, because you have non-business next?
Yes, right, yes.
I also think it would be a good idea to get the conservation commission's input on this subdivision. The wetlands are one that contain state threatened and endangered species in them. I think it would be a good idea to get the COMCOM's input on whether or not, something like a wildlife impact study would make sense in a subdivision like this. Definitely getting their input would make sense either way. I think that would happen before the next time we see them.
I don't know.
I think it falls right after, but-
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know when their meetings were- Is it? Oh, I have no idea.
Then it would, then it would fall there.
Okay, great.
I don't think we'd be opposed to going to the conservation commission, I think the only thing I'd say to that is a wildlife impact study is a pretty extensive report that's required for, say, an NHDS AOT permit. It is a pretty heavy lift from a financial perspective too, because you do have to further involve studies from a wetland scientist and stuff like that, and where this is just a-
Dangerous and endangered and threatened species that might be impacted, especially a clear field like this, it could be upland nesting habitat. There's a lot of concern, you know, there's a reason that these species are endangered, and this is one of the reasons that could be impacting a wildlife impact study, pretty much makes sense. I know it's a-
Yeah, the areas, right.
Could have a big impact, and we should know.
Yeah, the only, the areas that we're proposing to develop though, are areas that have been mowed for decades on a regular basis with equipment. So, it's, it's land that's already, in theory, been disturbed for many years, I understand it's for an agricultural purpose, but
Makes for nesting habitat.
I just think it's where we're asking for three frontage lots, I guess it'd be a question of, I think it's, it's a pretty significant cost to involve a wetland scientist for that additional scope.
We've been, we've been holding a 75-foot setback to the edge of the delineated wetlands. We're not proposing to go beyond the power line easements for any construction activity, so we're sensitive to the fact that there, there may be threatened and endangered species in the vicinity of the property, but we don't know that there are.
We are aware that it is.
I didn't-
I am personally aware.
We didn't, we, we weren't, I guess, I guess there wasn't any information provided to us that there were.
Have you done a natural area review?
No, for this, for this project, we're, yeah, for this project, we're not required to do one.
I understand that there are critical levels, and that they use an extensive amount of uplands, and so
Sure.
this could very well impact these threatened and endangered species that are adjacent to the site.
Sure.
And I know it's an expensive lift, but what you're proposing to do could, you know, be another step towards extirpating the species in this area. And that's not seeing, I think, this town support's doing, and we should have that information to know that this wouldn't, that it wouldn't be an impact.
Right. Ian and I can discuss that.
We'll discuss that, yeah. I'll, I'll reach out to the conservation commission independently and just get on their agenda. That'll be my first step.
Do you want to do a public hearing?
Yeah.
At this point?
Yeah.
All right, guys, have a seat, so we can open the public hearing, it is eight forty-four. Anybody who has a comment that is for this applicant? Anybody here for? Anybody here to speak against?
Yes, Tom I.209 Mill Pond Road.
You've got to have a seat, and, and again, state your name, because we, that's the only way we're going to get it on.
Okay, so, Tom I.209 Mill Pond Road, I'm in a butter. The development's going in, or proposed development is directly across the street from the home that we built, or the home that we purchased and have been rehabbing, it's the old house farm, or home, excuse me. The old horse farm, some people refer to it as that. So, I had a few comments, and then one request to the board. One of the comments was on the request about scenic roads, there are three scenic roads in the area. They are Kennard Road, Mitchell Road, and Case Road, so that this is a very important environmental area to the town for its scenic and wildlife and cultural heritage. Secondly, there is a question and comments about wetlands. There is a seasonal stream that flows into the pond, it's a pond as, also an emergent marsh for that wetland area. So, as Drew had brought up earlier, it's an important overall breeding and nesting habitat for a variety of different amphibians and herbiles. Third, there was on the lot sizes, I don't know if you've looked at those lot sizes, but, you know, buying into the town in 2020, I'd look at these lots and say, they're really ugly, and very highly unattractive in terms of how they're proposed as four-lot sizes. So, when new developments are being put in, I think three sites is much more appropriate to me as a new landowner and to a new home purchaser. I think what has been expressed by the developers and the architects, you know, the land people, has been more about cost, cost, cost to them, as opposed to the impact that's going to be happening collectively to this area. And then fourth, about the wildlife impact study, and they were, you were talking about the, when has the land itself been mowed, only the boundaries have been moved, been mowed since 2020. So, the field itself is not being regularly mowed at all. But my request to the town, or excuse me, is to the planning board, and I will gladly submit this request in writing, if it would please the planning board for that. But then my request is that the planning board take a broad view and analysis of the multiple developments that are being proposed or in process for the land in the watershed area that is currently being bound by Mitchell Road, by Smoke Street, by Mill Pond, by Case Road, and Front Hill Roads. I request that some type of a professional natural resources inventory or a floral and fauna assessment be conducted because of the multiple developments that are currently in play. The planning board should understand and take into account the impact on the plants, animals, and the water-holding capacity of this area before new housing developments are established. I understand the letter of the law and the regulations that the planning board must follow, because I serve on a board myself here in the town. But I respectfully request that consideration also be given to the spirit of the laws and to the spirit of those regulations for land and water conservation by reducing the number of approved sites. Thank you.
John?
Yep.
You've mentioned this stream, where, where do we see this?
I don't know if it's identified on the, on the property boundary, identify there, but it is a seasonal stream that cuts through.
Is that on this property, are you suggesting, or?
It kind of, I don't, since it's private land, you know, I'm, I'm not actively hiking it, but it does drain into the pond and wetlands area there. It goes underneath part of the power easement. And there was a lot of cutting that was done on the fernal property there too, kind of right up to that seasonal stream. So, I wouldn't, so there is water that flows there on a fairly regular basis. That's why it's a marsh area, because there's water flowing continually through it, through it. So, if, I don't have, I don't have that map.
From the lot that they have right there that's pre-existing in my square, your house is directly across the street from that one, right?
Well, it's, it's-
It's right here.
So, our barn is approximately here, which is across from the Stevens property, but our home is over here just before the curb.
But aren't you, oh, I'm just seeing on this map here, it looks like there's lots all around your property.
There were, yeah, that was, you can address that, Tracy.
Those are new.
Well, that's what, those are new, those are new lots, correct?
Correct. Because the property was settled up.
Not to be contrary to the thing, but there's a lot of weird lines, designs, and there's not all perfect squares either, just to be contrary to what the statement was.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Martha Chase.
Have a seat, please, and state it again.
My name is Martha Chase, I own 2 Fort Hill Road, and so the whole bog stream you guys are talking about, how it comes down, it's a wetland, it's kind of like, sort of like a, it's a watershed that comes down, and so- And so in the springtime, it fills up. In the summertime, sometimes it gets down to a little stream, and then in the winter, it fills up again. And unfortunately, when you stand, when you stand in my backyard, you look over here, and you guys last fall approved that development that was over there, comes off this hill, it's a watershed that comes down this way, and now you're looking at approved something there. And all I'm saying is that this has been kind of hard for me because my backyard now has 26, 28 houses over there, and now possibly three or four houses over there. But the deal is, is that this stream that comes down through there, it's just a watershed area, and everybody calls it the bog, everybody calls it the swamp. The beavers gone into it, you know, they were happy for a while. And yes, there is wildlife there. And yes, things happen there. And yes, there's an impact there. And I just think you have to take that kind of in consideration. Do I want to see houses in the backyard? Of course not. But, you know, things happen, and that's what you guys have to approve and do. But I just wanted to make clear, the reason why it's not named is because it's kind of, it's a place that fills up in the spring, kind of gets dry in the summer, fills up in the fall, freezes over in the wintertime, but it's a constant stream that goes through there, and it goes over to, I think it's not even like whatever's on the other side. Make sure, just to clear with that. But it's a water runoff place. So that's why I'm kind of concerned with this stuff, you know, happening in the field of there, because that field has a curve that comes down. It's a watershed. So anyways, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you.
So thank you.
I'm the son of Bobby and Gil Stevens, who are back there. They own 221 Mill Pond and 208, which is where I live. I don't have a lot more to add to what has been said, but I used to walk my dogs down to the wetlands. There's turtles, there's fish, there's any number of things, and I'm no expert, but there's stuff down there. And I really would urge you to have that wetland study. Also, my folks and I are pretty realistic, and if this project falls in, falls in just as it should with the regulations, laws, what have you, we're realistic, and of course it has to be passed. Having said that, I'm befuddled by the jerry, the odd gerrymandering of the lot that wraps on two sides of us. And I'm no expert, but it's, I just think that the project is overly ambitious, and at maximum probably should be three, two additional lots. Again, I'm not a planner, but I just think the way they've shoehorned this project together, and especially that third new lot, I mean, it's mostly wetlands. It's a little triangle of, at least visually to me, little triangle where the house can go and all septic, et cetera. But most of it's wetlands, and that's how I think gerrymandered the whole thing is. And one last thing, my sister Susan Hartwell, who lives at, owns 217 Mill Pond Road, and yes, we pretty much have our own little commune here, but she wanted me to ask, and again, I know it was addressed briefly, the cemetery. She also has a cemetery on her property, and her property envelops that cemetery, but she does not own that cemetery because it's a common public land. And her concern is that she was told she can't count, couldn't count that frontage for the cemetery as part of the frontage. And she asked me to ask you, or ask the developer, who's very nice, by the way, is the 20, is the frontage in front of that cemetery on this proposal also counted in that frontage? Or, again, I don't know, I have no expertise on this, but it's a question I would have if, how that cemetery is being treated. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys can answer that, though, can't you?
They will, when they come back up.
I'll wait for that.
When they come back up.
I wanted to give an answer.
Anyone else? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. It is eight fifty-five. You may come back up, and you can address.
I think some of them, let me know, some of them I think were more statements of the board to consider, so I don't think it's really my place to respond to some of them at this point unless the board gives me directions. So the scribbles here. The only one is, you know, I do want the board to consider, too, that I know that there are lot shape regulations within the ordinance, but, you know, the existing lot is also of a unique shape, so we're trying to create what we feel is best in line with the ordinance based on a triangle. Let's see, and then some additional watershed concerns. So the one, though, that I know I can respond to some degree, and I can always get more information for the board and for the public's curiosity, is the cemetery. So this is honestly why we, our application was probably delayed a month or two, trying to make sure we get to the bottom of it, because in many cases, if you have a cemetery on your property, it is oftentimes deeded to, you know, somebody reserved it from themselves. This was a case of where the deed, and we can certainly provide the deed, because I know the cemetery group would love to have some of this information as well, it's all publicly out there. It's a, this was a case where it was a use of an and or an or, and what, then using that terminology and reviewing against case law in both New Hampshire and Massachusetts, I think it was because of the use of and, it was, there was case law to point to that it was, I believe the term is life estate. And I'm happy to get maybe some easy-to-understand paragraph from my surveyor to pass along next time, but he did determine and actually did seek counsel from other land surveyors that in this case, the rights to that burial ground, you know, from a defined perspective, ended, and there was no predefined area to begin with, just where the headstones were. But it would feel odd to me not to protect it in some fashion, so that's why we're proposing the permanent easement. I can't speak specifically to a different burial ground, but that's why, you know, if somebody was told that it is a break in frontage, which if it was reserved land, it would have been, and then it would have been, and obviously something that would have affected the project design, just from a frontage perspective. It is common that cemeteries are reserved, and then via a subdivision, 100 years later, they actually get defined and monumented and such. So I know there's been a lot of applications before the board with different types of burial grounds.
Right.
Some are easements, some are something carved out in the middle of 100-acre parcels.
Provide that deed.
Yeah, we can certainly provide the deed, and I'll, it's literally, it's 1800s, as you would expect. We'll, I'll provide a summary paragraph that is a little bit.
Thank you.
And I think, I think the fact that we were very clear, both Ian and I, that we wanted to make sure that whether there was an easement or not, we wanted to make sure that the Langley and the.
The heirs.
The heirs had access to that burial ground. I mean, you can literally stand in the road and look over the stone wall and see it, but we wanted folks to be able to come and legally access that burial ground.
Well, you kind of have to, anyway.
Right, and obviously with this, with this, the state RSA is providing that 25-foot protection as well.
Yes.
So what is the width of that cemetery?
It's only, it's three, it's basically, I think it's about 15 feet.
Fifteen feet deep, and that depth was chosen.
Conservatively.
And those, again, with the ground penetrating radar, we confirmed that they're right behind the headstones. It's actually an odd scenario where we thought there was a chance they were buried on the roadside, because it's common to obviously have the body on the side of the lettering. And we learned from our, literally the guy called the bone finder is what he does with his GPR. He said it's actually not uncommon, especially if it would have been close to a traveled way, and in this case, they're buried behind it. So it's 15 foot.
Any communication with the ancestors?
I don't think we've tried to track them down, not sure. The last burials, I believe, were in the 18, late 1800s, I think. Yeah.
And you did put a 25-foot setback around the whole thing.
Yeah, and we're proposing that it will be monumented. We'll put some iron pins so that somebody, it is something monumented forever, yep.
And I have to say, I'm impressed you included the 36-inch oak.
Yeah, I think it was, it's actually an era, I think it's a maple, but it is, yeah.
Maple, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, come on, man.
Still a hardwood.
And that is intended to be, to be, to remain, we're not intending to cut that. And I know that was one of our neighbor's requests, but it's a beautiful tree. We don't plan to cut it.
All right.
Ready to continue?
Yes, please.
I would like to continue, proposing to continue case 24-11, Sub York, 206 Mill Pond Road to 28, no.
September 11th.
September 11th.
You want to do 11?
Nope.
We can, we can, sorry, we can ask.
If we could request the second meeting in September, because I'll be out of, I'll be out of state for the 11th, and I'd.
Okay.
The 25th.
Thank you.
Rewind by.
25th.
And do, wait, did we want to ask for deliverables and have it be the?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Deliverables by the 18th, and we want the new.
What was the deed? Conservation Commission.
Yes, information. Hopefully you will have been to Conservation Commission.
That, yeah, that gives us plenty of time to get to them.
And the new maps.
Yes, we'll have, I guess, an alternate plan that we'll show you.
Plans, yes, plans.
That kind of.
Yeah.
Might alleviate the issue.
Dead a deed or deed title so that we could follow this cemetery business?
Yeah, we'll provide something on the cemetery. If anything, I know it's more of a curiosity for a lot of people, so.
Is the motion good? We passed it?
We're talking about deliverables. Did you want to add anything?
I wanted to ask him a question, but it can wait.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So the motion was, the motion was made by Skip and seconded by Drew. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, please signify by saying.
Wait, 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 we need, do we need to discover the interpretation of this lot envelope, which has two different, three different?
I was gonna ask a question, but I know, I think that's separate from.
Right now, we are continuing the case to next month and going to look at new plans the next month, and then we can, after our discussion, on the second meeting of this month, we can further.
Great, yeah.
Follow up at that meeting. Does that sound good for you?
That, yes, that, that needs some help on the 28th.
Thank you, okay. So all those in favor of continuing this case to next month on the 25th with deliverables on the 18th as discussed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carried, seven zero zero. We will see you guys next month.
Before Blair, I think Blair had a question, but we'll, when the board discusses on the 28th, is there a way to summarize, I guess, the board's opinion at that meeting? Is there anything that's worth sharing from that, based on the discussion of the interpretation?
Well, you can.
I'm just trying to like, make sure I come ready on the 25th.
It's a public workshop, but you can also probably contact them to.
Ian, just come and chime in.
I'm honestly having my phone on ringer because baby three's, I think, could come in any day, so.
Well, and you can also follow up with Alana.
Yeah, I'll watch, I'll watch the YouTube, make sure it's a good one.
Give me a minute.
So for all of you who are leaving, please know you will, excuse me, people, please.
My dad's alien, he needs to leave.
Okay, but I just wanted to let you know that you will not be re-notified. Your notification that the meeting is being continued is tonight, okay? That's all. It's fine, okay?
We appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay. You guys all set?
Claire, did you?
Yeah, the address of this property is 206.
The existing home.
And, but it looks like next door you have, listed as 221? Is that?
I just want to make sure that. No, that should be 208.
I saw that, too.
Stevens is 221, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure I wasn't going crazy.
No.
Of course you are.
The what?
It is past nine, so yeah, that's, that's, that's the witching hour when we start to get.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's why, that's why.
I believe that's their mailing, that's their mailing address.
That's the mailing address. I believe the actual street address is 208 for that kind of parcel that's carved out, but that's.
Yeah, I noticed that the one, the one next to it has McCrillis Road, so.
Yeah.
It's coming from the assessor.
Yeah, gotcha.
All right, fair enough. Gotcha.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. All right, now I gotta figure out where all my stuff is. I know. There. Okay, our third case this evening, third and final case.
Good case.
Yes, yes. It is case number 24012, SIT Shea Concrete at 160 Old Turnpike Road. Application from BSC Group on behalf of Shea Concrete for an amended site plan review including various proposed changes to the property. The original site plan was approved July 27th, 2022, with case number 22007. This property is located at 160 Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map number three, lot 002-2.
Thank you for your patience tonight, guys.
Yes, I was just gonna say a lot.
Just bringing that back, keep mine.
Nope, that's okay.
I'll put it under here, you know.
I don't care who says it, I thought it was said. All right, gentlemen.
Okay.
My head.
So good evening, members of the board. My name is Joseph White, engineer from BSC Group, representing the applicant here, Shea Concrete. With me is George Sauerman, who's representing Shea Concrete as well, and then Daniel Muller behind us from CBZ Law. He's the attorney for the project. So just a brief summary of the changes we're presenting here. Some of you may remember back in 2022, this project was before you, for a manufacturing facility for precast concrete products. So some of the changes we had here, there's a proposed building addition that you can see there on the, I guess, the southwest corner of the building. We relocated the proposed septic system. The original system we had was a pump design, so bringing it closer to the office area where the bathrooms are made sense, be able to get there by gravity. We added a.
Could you do me a favor?
Yes.
Speak this direction so I can hear you, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we added, in yellow there, you can see a proposed ramp to get up to the manufacturing facility there. If you've ever been by the site, I'm not sure if the board's been out previously, but there's, you know, precast concrete structures that are stored out there, so they need to move those around, move them around the site and get up to the building and bring them, you know, by forklift and other machines like that. We did expand the, there's a proposed concrete apron that was approved around the building, so it's for storage, maneuvering around the building, things like that. So we did expand that in two locations, off to the south side of the pad by 13 feet, expanding in that direction, and also off to the west, which is your, I guess, top part of the plan there, just to bump out in that direction, just for extra precast, you know, structural storage and, and things like that. We relocated the fire cistern. You can see it at the bottom of the plan there in red, so that's the new location. We started excavating out here this past spring. There's a big ridge, you can kind of see where the contours are very tight on the bottom part of the building there. Turns out that there was quite a bit of ledge in there. Those cisterns are pretty deep, so we relocated those. They'll be primarily in a fill situation now, so we don't have to, you know, dig down as deep there.
You found ledge, not again?
I couldn't believe it. Obviously associated with this, because we're increasing the impervious area a little bit, we did rework the drainage, so we're still, same as, you know, originally we're reducing our meeting needs as things flow and all the storms, we provided a full drainage report along with the site plan. I think that pretty much summarizes, you know, the changes we have. So I guess I'll go out for any questions from the board here.
I didn't bring my plan. I didn't bring my plan set tonight, I don't know what I did do. So, the items that you have marked there in colors...
Yep.
Are basically the changes that were made since the last one, right?
Correct, aside, you're not seeing...
Since that last site plan.
Correct, you're not seeing the drainage changes, which, so Shea Concrete manufactures their own concrete, you know, the engine chambers, if you will. So, we switched to concrete, Shea Concrete made ones.
I noticed on the previous set of plans that the fire chief wasn't excited about concrete.
Correct.
And you proved him wrong.
I can speak on that, yeah. So, I met with the previous...
I noticed the design of it is much different from the previous one that I've seen.
So, I met with the previous fire chief and spoke to him about it, and he had a subdivision regulation that was in the subdivision that there was no plastic cisterns. And met him here at a meeting one night, and he said, "Well, it's gonna be on private property, as long as you maintain it, I don't have a problem with it." Then he was no longer the fire chief, so I met with the new assistant fire chief, I think he's the fire chief now, if I'm correct, and explained all that to him as well, and has met with the building inspector, and it is on private property, so it is, concrete is okay. If it was in subdivision regulations, that's something different. So, Shea Concrete's gonna own the cistern, because it's on private property.
Yeah, and it's also...
Town of Nottingham has the right to use it, but it's on private property.
And you're gonna maintain it?
Correct, we're gonna maintain it, every year there'll be a sightly visit with that, it'll be maintained.
It's your property.
Yep.
So, my other question is, and I'm just throwing this question out there. I was out on Pierce Island a couple of weekends ago, and I noticed there's a parking lot out there, new parking lot. It has some sort of what appears to be concrete, impervious surface that is laid down there. Is that a product that you guys make in some way, shape, or form, or is it a lattice?
Impervious or pervious?
Oh, sorry, pervious.
Okay.
Well, I'm sure they had to patch it pretty hard in order to get that stuff to sit on the top, so I don't know that.
So, they do...
It certainly allows the water to go down a couple of...
Yeah, and they do, they do make a pervious, obviously, asphalt, but in an application like this, where there's a lot of machinery moving around and things like that, and it's concrete, so there's sand, there's things that go into concrete, that gets clogged fairly easily. It would require quite a bit of maintenance to keep that, keep that free and draining. Plus, with the concrete, that's all gonna be reinforced, so making that pervious...
I'm assuming this would be reinforced in some fashion anywhere, but I meant what was installed in Portsmouth, I'm just, you don't think that part?
Um, yeah, I don't...
For residential use or whatever?
Anything else?
I have a question, I was not here at this time.
I want to get to Blair at some point, so...
What's that?
We have to hear from Blair still on this.
Oh, I'll think quick, it just noted that there's a variance here at some point, I was not here, so there's a 67-foot variance, or 62.5-foot minimum size that I provided. So, there's no new buildings or anything in that setback that changes that variance, I didn't see that variance, so I don't...
Okay, Blair, go ahead.
Yeah, this is an amendment, so, you know, board consideration should stay within the confines of what they're requesting, because it is amending a previous approval. The latitude on that is up to the decision of the chair, I just have to feel like I have to check that box and say it. And, you know, my narrative basically just tried to explain to the board what they're proposing, because it does, you know, one thing is changing another, like the expansion of the pad is moving the leach field and septic around. He also mentioned that, because they're using a pump system now as well, bringing it closer to the building, both those all make sense.
We weren't previously using a pump, this won't be a pump now.
It won't be a pump.
It was previously pumped all the way out back, now we're gonna get there by gravity.
Got it backwards, but, yeah. So, those are just some of the things to pay attention to, and then just noting where the actual cistern is being relocated to. By and large, my interpretation is that the plan, what they're proposing is not changing, it's certainly not changing the use, and I certainly don't think it's changing the impact of, you know, how the property's gonna be used, so... Yeah, that would be my, you know, the part that I would add. I don't have anything, I feel like the board, the board needs to, you know, be alarmed of at this time. The only thing that I would just suggest is, you know, they did provide a new drainage report, this had a pretty serious drainage report last time, because there is some elevation change, there are wetlands, I would suggest sending that out to CMA for their review. I did copy them on it, so he has it, but I think it would just maybe behoove Alana to formally say, "Can you, can you guys review this and make sure that their calculations are correct, and what their proposed restore water management is sufficient?"
One more thing I would add, all of the changes and improvements are still within the originally permitted limit of work, so we're not expanding that footprint.
Yeah.
You know, everything was still, that's the same limit of work you're seeing here that was previously approved, so...
Say, say, say that again, because...
Yep, so there was originally a limit of work that was proposed with the approved project.
Yeah, the 50-foot wide apron around, yeah.
Um, no, so if you look...
Limit of disturbance?
Limit of disturbance, if you will, I guess over here's already kind of disturbed, but this dark dashed line here, it's kind of like the project work envelope, if you will. So, this didn't change.
Oh, gotcha.
Changes, everything's still contained inside.
Okay. I understand what you're saying now, okay. Because I was out at your, the site the last time, because I was part of the board when that application came through. So, it's not expanding further into the woods or anything, it's just, from what I'm reading, you're just widening your apron, essentially.
Correct.
Okay, and moving the cistern and stuff, and the cistern's already moved, is that what you said, or is not?
It has not been, it's moved on the plans, it hasn't been installed yet, yeah.
Okay. All right, so wait, application is complete?
Uh, yeah.
Not a regional impact, correct?
Uh, no, the board did vote that this was a regional impact prior.
But nothing's...
No, I don't see how this is elevating this to regional impact, it's still within the limit of work. The board has considered all of what the impacts would be, I don't see how this is increasing anything...
Okay.
That would make this justified to revisit that.
Okay, I didn't think so either.
Yeah.
Okay, so, motion to accept application as complete?
I'll make a motion to accept case 24-12, site plan for Shea Concrete, 160 Old Turnpike Road, as complete.
And...
Application as complete, and...
Not a DR.
And it's not a development of regional impact.
Is there a second? Second, of course, it's been moved and seconded, to accept the application as complete, and to list it as not a direct regional impact case. All comments, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And no opposed, 7-0-0, okay.
Did, in the original site plan, did you get any book from the Conservation Commission on that? And did any of their concerns during that review, is there anything they were concerned about that is being changed in any way on this current? It didn't look like it, but...
Just a dumb question, I don't, you make a bad concrete something, what do you do, you crush that up and re, what do you, and what happens?
You mean like a precast structure?
Waste run off, or...
So, so all the, all the concrete is made inside the building, and there's cranes inside the building, so they have different stations. So, if you were pouring a set of stairs, or a septic tank, or a Jersey barrier, it's all computerized from a batch plant, so everything goes to that station and pours exactly there, and if they have extra concrete by any chance, they pour like a sonotube. So, they, or a D-box that only uses very little, so there's hardly zero waste, and I mean zero waste, they don't throw concrete away, you know, so they, they'll always have forms set up to pour extra concrete. If they had a bad batch of concrete, they truck it out to a company where they grind it all up and turn it into gravel, they come and pick it up.
Okay.
Yep, so, yep.
I'm familiar with, we just did some work, and I'm familiar with the ground up concrete, but...
Yep.
May I ask?
Yep.
With this new existing facility?
Yep.
What's happening to the, I mean, this new proposed facility, what's happening to the existing facility?
The existing facility's gonna be used the same way it's being used currently. You know, so Shea, Shea makes a lot of products, they make over 1,000 products, precast products, and some of them are really custom-made, so they'll have to make custom forms, and it might take three days or a week to set up, so they're gonna use that building to do more custom forms. And then this will be more like everyday pouring, like septic tanks and stuff like that, Jersey barriers.
Okay, good, thank you.
When are you gonna start construction on this, if you're approved?
Uh, we're hoping to get started right away, we've already, we cut the trees down last year, we're down to subgrade right now, so we're in the middle of working on it right now, so we want to keep moving forward.
I'm just asking, but you're back again.
The building's already been ordered, it's coming in, so... Yep.
I saw the big, I stopped by there today, saw the big jungle ledge, like, ooh, boy.
Yep, that's why we, I talked to the building inspector and the fire chief about moving that cistern from the left, from the right to the left, just so it would be in a better position, so they were fine with that.
Is there a particular reason why cistern is required?
Uh, we have a sprinkler system in the building.
Is that to keep down the dust, kind of, or...
Well, we don't have a lot of dust inside the building, per se, you know, the, the building inside is all wet concrete most of the time.
Yeah.
So, inside the building, there's very little dust, but a little bit of dust outside, but...
Trying to figure out what would burn.
Yeah, I always say that, I've built many a buildings for Shea's, and I say the same thing, there's nothing in there that can burn, but, you know, there's always something could happen with cardboard or something, you know, but, you know, we have to, it's a state law, once you get to a certain size building, you have to put a sprinkler system in, so we are.
All right, so your recommendation, Blair, is to send this to CMA for review, because of the storm, water?
Yes, they've updated and probably changed, yes, the stormwater report, I think the board should just have them review it and come back with any comments confirming, or confirm that the calculations are correct. You know, the site disturbance, the boundaries of it haven't changed, but with the new, there's different retaining walls, right? And there's the ramp, and then you have the cisterns that are gonna now be in a different area with fill. So, I just feel like we need to have this, that box checked, make sure that they're handling their water correctly.
What is for its pleasure?
It's minor.
Yes, it's, it's not gonna be a substantial review, but I do believe that...
It shouldn't delay their process of doing this very long.
No.
Is there anything that we can do on our end to speed, speed up that process, like, as far as CMA's review? I know you said you already copied them, I think, on the stormwater report, so they have it.
Uh, yeah, I have it, I don't think he's, he won't do anything with it until he's instructed, but at least he can get going on it, he's probably at least aware of it, so he can start putting it on his schedule, so at least gives him a few days head start to just...
Yeah, a lot could email once you back in during your regular office hours, just to get it going.
I can even do it tomorrow, too, you know, I can just take care of it. Is that okay? Sorry?
Yeah, they'll need, we'll need to get an estimate first, right?
Okay, I'll email and ask them for that. Yes.
All right, entertain a motion, please. For...
Continue.
Continuing the case and, oh, I was gonna say, for continuing the case...
What were you asking for?
I'll make a motion to...
And, wait, for continuing the case and including the, please, thank you.
I will make a motion to continue case 24-12, site plan for Shea Concrete at 160 Old Turnpike Road, until the September 9th meeting at 7...
Uh, 11th.
Oh, sorry, at September 9-11, I mean, meeting, September 11 meeting at 7:00 PM. And to send the stormwater management plan review to CMA, sorry, the stormwater management plan to CMA for review.
Yes, and you seconded Skip?
No change.
Right, it's been moved and seconded to continue the case until September 11th at 7:00 PM, and send the stormwater plans to CMA for review. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And no opposed, so it's 7-0-0. Yes.
There is still a public side, so I'm ready to...
Yeah, y'all, do, do any of you guys have anything to say? I didn't open the public hearing, sorry, do you have anything?
No.
You're all set, okay, thank you. So, no public hearing, as there's no public to make any comments about the case. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
See you on the 11th.
Okay, thank you.
They were, yeah, that's, that's why I, he interviewed, said them, but they, I said, public comments, I'm like, oh, maybe I misunderstood. Say that again, Alana, I can't...
I was gonna say, who seconded, can't find a motion now. So, um, right, who just seconded the, the motion to accept that one as complete, but not a development of regional?
Chris.
Chris, okay. And I'll figure out the other one, I'm missing it out.
Okay.
We'll check you on minutes next month, or whatever. Drew has an eye for that.
All right, you guys, it's almost 9:30, did anybody look at the, I think it's minutes next, right? Do we want to... Yeah, yes, we can, does anybody have, there's no public here for public comment, so we don't have to go over that. The agenda for the joint meeting, do we have a... It's there in the, okay. Yes, right, Alana, today?
Yeah.
Today?
Yeah, I sent a, I sent a amended one today, I accepted a while ago.
Okay.
You might want to put lot envelopes on this one.
More, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
That needs help.
And so, tabling the minutes, any updates from anybody, anybody got anything? Blair, anybody?
No, so, I'm keeping a list of ongoing, you know, this is at Ed's request, and it's just things that I noticed along the way. I have a long-going list of items, you've seen it before. If you keep the agenda the way it is, it's fine, but this, this will probably be what we follow, rather than have you try to get everything on there. As long as we're talking about zoning ordinance and, and site plan regulations and subdivision regulations, if it says that, then we can cover everything. So, you do what you want to do, I'm just saying, if you, if you forget or if you miss something, it's fine, we can still talk about it. But I will circulate this around and probably include, Ed had asked me to do some draft language, I don't know exactly what the board wants, I can take a stab at it, and we can look at it, but that, that's just what to sort of expect for the meeting. Unless I hear something from anybody else that wants to see something, but for now, that's what we're looking at.
You also spoke to Ellen?
Yes.
What we got?
Yes, so, um, the state has allocated funds for housing. You've heard of the HOP grants, Housing Opportunity Planning Grants. There was a first round of HOP grants a year and change ago, SRPC has worked on many of them with different communities. They're having another round coming up, the round is due September 30th. The grant application is due September 30th. I think Nottingham is in a good position to look at putting in a HOP grant application to help write an update to the chapter on housing of your master plan. Your master plan is 10 years, something like that, old, maybe a little bit old.
Plus.
Yeah, 10, 12-plus years old.
We'll just say 10 plus.
Yeah. It's not uncommon for communities your size to do chapters at a time and not do the entire...
That's what we tried to do the last time.
Yeah, so, to do just a single chapter is not a bad idea. So, I would recommend that the community pursue an application, here's the caveat. We are a consultant, right, I am a consultant that is hired by you to do circuit writing reviews, and this is not that, this is... that, this is separate. That grant is to pay for essentially someone to do it for you. You can hire a private consultant, you can hire SRPC. You know, I'll make a case, you know, there's reasons to hire us over somebody else, but that's your choice. So what I can do is just sort of like bring it to your attention, advise you, you as a community, board of selectmen, have to make a decision about who to hire and how to do that process. But I have attended the webinars on what the grants need. We have staff in house that has already written grant applications, you know, I've written grant applications for other ones, not a HOP grant per se, but I have been working on the HOP grants for other communities. So, you know, I'm in a pretty good position to do this for this community.
Did you give a price?
Uh, no, only that-
What's the grant worth? Like, how much money is in there?
Well, you can apply up to $100,000. If you're just doing a, a housing chapter, I actually don't know the dollar amount. But what I do know is it's, there's no match, right? So you can do 100% funding, unless for some reason, you know, let's say the, the cost is 20,000, but they only give you 15 or something like that, you know, the grant, the grant reviewers. I guess you'd have to make a decision at that point.
So we, it's, there's $2.9 million, and I did the seminars, too. $100,000 maximum grant, a lot of towns probably do a lot less, but you probably do some discovery on that. And there are consultants out there that probably can provide an estimate with a little homework to say, you know, to rewrite the housing section or whatever it be, you know, you should apply for this much grant. SRPC has done, Barrington, they just did the grant, and Barrington got the grant, and is rewriting their master plan and their, their housing thing right now. Very nice. So it, this is something that's, we should be looking at and doing, because it's, I, I think generally towns are about $25,000, and that basically puts out money for the consultant to do a townwide survey, you know, put together the objectives. Just because they suggest things, somebody pointed out to me, doesn't mean that we have to follow as a community, because, you know, we, we have our, we're our community. We don't have to, if the state or the consultant says, hey, you should do something, we don't have to do that. There's an allocation for administration fees for somebody in the town, whether it's Alana making copies, mailing, doing whatever type of stuff in, in that grant, too, so that it's not all volunteer time and effort on, or cost to us, because there's probably a lot of effort there, so.
Yeah, you need to identify a group of people. It's usually like a subset of this, of this group.
With community involvement, right?
Yes, with community involvement, with other, other departments or other commissions, like the Conservation Commission, whatever. And then that group is essentially reporting back to the planning board, because the planning board ultimately should aspire to adopting the chapter, and so that's a vote that you would all take. So that is, you know, this does, you know, master plan chapters carry some legal weight, not the same weight as, say, a-
Ordinance.
An ordinance, but it does carry some legal weight. So it does have to be advertised, it has to be adopted, right? There's a procedure for it.
Well, and I noticed tonight, something that I've been feeling and, and saying over and over again, is that we've got a lot of development going on, and I think we need to put the brakes on that a little bit. And that guy actually made the comment about that, that we should have a slowdown on development, and that's something that would be, or could potentially be addressed through this review of that, correct? Because that's part of, the master plan addresses those issues, does it not?
Master plan creates the opportunity for ordinance to be back.
Relevant master plan update, housing needs assessment, review land use regulations, make recommendations, revise them if applicable, then it goes to town session. This is done from January until September 26th. So we, we got, like, it's a long period of time to-
I'll ask about that, about if a moratorium can be, or what, what the process is. It's, it's not easy.
No, I know, based on the state book.
It's, it's, it's more than just us, it's more than just a master plan chapter, it's more involved, I do know that, because you have to, it's almost like you have to do a separate study demonstrating that you cannot handle the current wave of applications-
Right.
And housing development.
Right.
So, that, it's a comprehensive look at your community facilities, your infrastructure-
Right.
Schools.
Police, fire.
Yes, you know, all your services, that sort of thing.
Right, yeah.
That is not a master plan chapter, it's something different, and you have to pay for that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
But you can, there's all, there's other ways of doing it according to the law book. You can actually have a petition from the people. They can get a petition, send it to the, to the BOS, and it has to be addressed.
Was there CIP being done, that, how's that rolling?
Oh, I have a different question, about the improvement plan.
And CIP? Yes.
It's nothing to do with master plan.
Well, that's, impact fees and, what are the impacts to the services?
CFP is more, is more on what the town projects to spend money on in the next five years. Fire trucks.
And tractors may, may have something to do with that, but it's hardly the basis for impact.
Right.
That's what the CIP is for.
All right, do you have anything else?
Um, tomorrow is the monthly webinars for that New Hampshire Housing Hosts. They did a big survey of what communities did in, after the first round of HOP grants, what did communities do. There's a big survey that was done statewide, and they're gonna be releasing the, the feedback. So it might, it, it sort of dovetails nicely with the idea of doing a housing master plan chapter, so that you could see what communities did, you know, after they did their HOP grant. So it just might be of interest.
It's tomorrow, it's-
Tomorrow at noon.
Virtual?
Yep.
What time?
Noon. If you look back at the old emails, I know I've sent it to you, but if someone reminds me, I can, or if I remember, I can send it to you, but you might not get it till like 10 minutes beforehand.
I, I thought you sent it out.
I know I sent it out at least once, because I always just forward it right on.
Yeah.
But it might be buried in your emails.
Don't fight a lot of minutes before, because that was a fail on the, on this other meeting that I didn't watch.
Well, I set it up for 12:00 AM, so I think if I log in, it'll be in, okay.
Any, anything else?
I'm good.
All right. Alana? Buzz, Skip?
Oh.
Anything, before we adjourn? I'm not even gonna ask Chris.
No.
Good, okay. Anything, John?
We're good.
You have nothing from the BOS to tell us about?
Hey, Kate Burke, this was good.
Yeah, piss goes, was good.
Always good.
That's a sore society thing, but it was still great.
Absolutely.
It was great, they did money, it was wonderful. The BOS had a nice meeting, we actually had heartless meetings we've had in two years.
No fistfights?
Which, no, but it was, uh, just strictly business and very loud speaking, so it was good.
That's why we came, or?
Tough, tough crowd.
It's not just me.
Yeah.
We have a meeting on Monday, I know it's probably too soon for what we talked, just mentioned, but you know, everything's coming down to expenditures online. So as much as a great plant is, it's the reward and the cost to get the reward. If it's not beneficial, or we don't feel it to be, then probably not gonna happen. But we are in support of obviously any way we can find money in order to do the master plan, but-
I was clear to her, I said, I can't, I can never guarantee you that it'll be 100%, but the goal on the state's part is to make it 100%, right? So.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And again, we know the master plan should be, it is, it has to be done, everything we get done on it. But you know, obviously we have to consider the cost. Everything this year is a cost factor.
Yeah, as long as we can, you know, whoever does your application, as long as they award you 100%, you know, it seems like a good idea, but, yes.
I, I think it's conceivable that after there's a 5% administration fee, that might be something that could go backwards. I, I don't know how that works, because you had said, you know, you would maybe do this and take a-
Well, so the way we, the way we've done it in the past is that, the SRPC, the 5% administration fee goes, would go to be part of the feed to SRPC, because we would just handle all of the costs for putting the survey outs, any copies, stuff like that. Alana could do it, you could keep it in-house, but then that means she's doing everything. We have all the resources in-house to do it as part of this. So that's how we did it, with other communities. So it's an option.
So you've done, you've been the consultant for other communities on?
Yes, I did, I was the lead, not the sole author, but I was the lead on New Durham's, but I have been working on Dover's, Somersworth's, Dover and Somersworth. I know other staff has been doing New Market, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Do you have anything?
Well, I would like to add nothing.
Okay, good. Motion, motion to adjourn?
I, I would like to add a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, we are adjourned.